I call this pre-meeting briefing of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 6 o'clock PM on June 5th, 2025. The purpose of this pre-meeting briefing is to conduct a briefing session with administrative staff regarding the posted agenda item for the regular board meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM on June 5th, 2025. For the record, board members present are Marjorie Barnes, Carolyn Benavides, Kim Brady, Iliana Garza Rojas, Paul Gilmore, Randy Shackman, and myself, Cassandra Hatfield. The next item on our agenda is Audience for Guests. Persons who wish to speak during Audience for Guests must have submitted a form electronically for this purpose prior to 1:00 PM, the posted deadline. We do not have any forms submitted, so we will move on to item number three. Dr. Eldridge, turning over to you for administrative reports.
Okay, the first item for administrative reports is our new leadership updates. So Ms. Rodriguez, if you'll announce our new leadership updates.
Yes, good evening, President Hatfield. Congratulations, Dr. Eldridge, and esteemed members of the board. We are proud to announce three new leadership updates, and we will start with Mr. Shulak. So CFB is proud to announce a current Creekview High School principal, Leon Shulak, as the new Executive Director of Student Services. He is a lifelong CFB. He is a lifelong CFB family member. He graduated from Creekview and also served at his middle school alma mater, Long, and his high school alma mater, Creekview. Congratulations, Leon, if you'd like to stand and just be recognized by the board. We would also like to announce Dr. Keith Davis, who is the current Blaylac Principal. He is going to be welcomed into Creekview High School. Congratulations, Dr. Davis. He has, he actually has taught, or has his career in education in over three states, correct? He started his career in, I believe, in Illinois, or may have, in Illinois. He also taught in St. Louis, Missouri, and has taught here in CFB, or I'm sorry, not taught, he led in CFB. He is a proud father of two sons, and he is committed to believing that every child is unique and deserves a safe and nurturing environment. Congratulations, Dr. Davis. And our last but not least, and y'all probably all just received it, breaking news. We would also like to recognize Mr. Isaiah Young, the current Assistant Principal at Newman Smith High School. If you can please stand. Mr. Isaiah Young will now be welcomed by Blaylac Middle School as a principal. He also has a very prestigious background in the military, served in the Marine Corps, has also been, is currently getting his superintendent certification at Texas A&amp;M University, and, that's right, and is a father of five, married for 36 years. Congratulations, Mr. Young. And that concludes our leadership updates.
On behalf of the board and myself, I'm so thankful that you all agreed to take these great positions, and you're all going to be great leaders. We just couldn't be more proud. So if you will all stand at this time, and we're going to have pictures out here with your families, so if you'll, you can exit right now and take your pictures. So thank you to the families for being here tonight. Thank you so much. Okay, as the new leadership exits to get their photos, our next administrative report is from Ms. Carla Settles, item 5J, Consider and Approve After-School Program Services Without YMCA. Ms. Settles?
Great. All right, well, thank you for letting me have a few minutes to talk about 5J, the MOU at the YMCA, and their out-of-school time program. Good evening, President Hatfield, esteemed members of the board, and Dr. Eldridge. We have spent the last school year with two programs running side by side within the district. One program has been in the district for quite some time after the bell, and we've piloted YMCA throughout the district and in all the quadrants. And we found that with the YMCA, we won't have wait lists, which meets the needs of our families and provides extra enrichment experiences. And probably most important to me, as I am navigating budget development, it helps us stay financially solvent without the budget line item for ATB on our general fund. They also provide an extensive tuition assistance program, which they, YMCA, fundraises themselves that allows our families to bridge the gap of any change in cost to their households. And they also offer staff opportunities to work within the program and discounts for our staff's students that reside within the district. So YMCA has a very established reputation, and they share the values that CFB has towards their family of children. They partner with 10 school districts throughout North Texas and serve over 9,000 children annually through high-quality after-school and day camp services. They have a dedicated local team of 35 full-time professionals and 400 part-time staff. They focus on strategic staff selection, robust training, and strong school partnerships with engaging programming and responsive customer service. They have a fully fledged risk management and HR team that they continually prioritize continuous improvement, the regular feedback, and a commitment to excellence, so that our partner will make sure our family's needs are met and feel confident in the care that's So why do after-school care programs matter? Well, it matters because families need it. Forty-two percent of unemployed parents list childcare among their top five reasons for not working, and parents miss an average of eight days of work per year due to lack of care. In Dallas County, 89% of parents with a child in after-school and day camps agree that these programs help them keep their job or help them support their family more. And when we look at student-focused decisions, the hours of three and six are the peak hours for mischief and danger. So 83% of low-income parents believe that access to after-school and day camp programs will reduce the likelihood of risky behaviors among students. And so partnerships like YMCA matter. Being a good partner matters. When it comes to student tuition assistance, we are bridging some of those administrative gaps where those families that we have already identified as economically disadvantaged have an easy pathway to those tuition assistance dollars. And we've heard a lot of positive feedback this year. Parents are pleased with the program. Admin is pleased with the partnership on the campus, and so we're looking to expanding that positive experience throughout the district. There is also summer day camp going on right now at River Chase. It's the Fizz Fun and Float Camp. It is a tuition-based program to make sure our kids are engaged over the summer. So they also provide tuition assistance and scholarships for these kinds of programs. I'm excited to see that they are continuing that swimming instruction because of the risk of drowning over each summer seems to make the news. And then I'm most looking forward to next summer. This is an incredible opportunity to have a program like the Summer Learning Academy within our district. This five-week program that is free to families and the district is about bridging that summer slide. So if you imagine one of your kids showing up in the morning, being taught by CFB ISD teachers with CFB ISD curriculum, to shore up any of the lagging measures that might have been identified by the district, then they will still have a fun afternoon. And that intensive program has been proven in more than one district in North Texas to be extremely impactful. The colleagues I've talked to in Midlothian ISD, they helped mitigate some of their pandemic gaps by partnering with the YMCA, and I've heard great success in Irving as well. So our major advantages to the Summer Academy is also parent engagement. Those 45-minute parent engagement once a week, they review things like financial literacy, interview and job application skills. And again, no cost to the district, and I love to, you know, as a math nerd myself, I really love to see the focus on STEM programming for the fourth and fifth grade. I need a couple of future CFOs. And all that the district needs to provide is a campus, identify the students, five classrooms, a gym, and a cafeteria. So I feel like this is a really big win. And here's just another slide about the details and the successes in other districts. But I'm, again, I'm really grateful for the opportunity, and I've invited the YMCA team right over here, this row right here, to, I'm going to ask Jody Newman to come up and introduce them, because everybody you see right here, these are our people. These are CFB ISD YMCA. Yeah, don't be shy.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to partner with the district. We appreciate each and every one of you and our community. I'm Jody Newman, I'm Vice President of Childcare at the Dallas Metro YMCA. This is Nabri Pointer, she's our Executive Director. Doris Bryant is our Senior Program Director. Kim is one of our Program Directors. Horace is one of our Program Directors. Rhonda is one of our Program Directors. By the way, all here in the district. Rosio is not only a Program Director, but she also is head of our Summer Learning Academy. Teresa is opening as Services Director. And Francisco has been fabulous already with our CFB families, giving virtual office hours for financial assistance and scholarships. So all of us are available, and this is not our entire team. Our entire team couldn't make it tonight, but we just wanted to say thank you, thank you to the community, thank you to all of you for allowing us to partner, and we look forward to a wonderful year together. So we appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Settle, and thank you to the YMCA team for being here. As a parent who uses the YMCA services, I can proudly say that I'm very happy for the enrichment opportunity that my own son has and that my daughter had when she was in the district or at an elementary school. So thank you for the hard work you do for kids, because it is important of parents to have safety after school, and you guys provide a great program that enriches everything. So, board members, with that, are there any questions or comments? All right, Dr. Eldridge, we'll move to the next agenda item that you have.
Okay, the next three agenda items, 5AK, 5AQ, and 5AR, Mr. Corey Blackburn.
Good evening, Dr. Eldridge, President Hatfield, members of the board. It's good to see you all tonight. I'm going to go ahead and go through all three, if that's all right, and we can, I'll answer any questions at the end. 5AK for architectural services, this is reauthorizing, or excuse me, a second extension of the original pool that was authorized around the same time as the 2023 bond was passed. So just providing a pool of qualified architects that we can use for design services. Item 5AQ is a contract change. This is in reference to, as you look in the description, our renovation package seven. With the removal of Long Middle School from that package, it's now become a much smaller project, and it's not really appropriate for a large-scale firm like was originally contracted. So we're recommending to change that to a smaller firm, which is Jackson Construction. We've had very good success with Jackson, and Hillary Wilkinson is continuing with renovation package three and renovation package five, and we've been very pleased with them. This is just trying to make sure we have the right projects with the right contractors. And then for item 5AR, GMP2 for renovation package three, if you'll recall, we approved an early release package in the April board meeting for package three. This is Turner High School, Perry Middle School, and Good Elementary. The work at Perry and Good is very minor, it's just a couple of small things. Most of it's at Turner. This will be for the remainder of the scope at Turner. We've already mobilized for demolition. Demolition is underway right now. If you drive by the campus, you'll see a double-wide construction trailer on the back corner. So they're well underway, getting started on their demolition, making safe mechanical, electrical, and plumbing items so demolition can happen safely. We've been working very carefully with campus staff on getting things ready for them to begin. We're very thankful for campus staff and all that they've done to help facilitate the process. And with that, I will answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, you're off the hook. All right, at this time, board members, are there any additional questions regarding the consent agenda items? Yes, Mr. Gilmore?
Yeah, I'm Gilmore. Learning curve here. President Hatfield, I'm going to be requesting to remove items AS, AT, AU, and AV from the consent agenda.
All right, understood. Thank you. I will also be removing item AN from the consent agenda personally. Are there any other questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? All right, so with no other questions, we will move to adjourn. We've reached the end of our meeting for the pre-meeting, and the time is now 6:16 PM. Thank you.
I call this regular meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees to order at seven o'clock PM on June 5th, 2025. As we begin, I'd like to officially welcome Mr. Gilmore to the Board of Trustees. Your knowledge and expertise is going to be valuable as we continue our work together. And then I want to welcome back Ms. Brady and Ms. Garza Rojas as we continue our work on the board. This team, new and returning, brings a renewed sense of shared dedication to public service, and we are excited to continue supporting the district as we move forward with high expectations for all. Board members, district staff members, at this time, I would like to pause and honor the life and legacy of Reverend Willie Rainwater. He is a pillar of our community and dedicated himself to justice, education, and unity that has a lasting impact on Carrollton. Reverend Rainwater's tireless efforts alongside his wife Juanita in founding the Martin Luther King Junior Parade and providing scholarships through Christ Community Connection have empowered countless students and families in our district. His unwavering commitment and service for equality is an inspiration to all, and I'd like for us to observe a moment of silence in his honor at this time. Thank you. May we carry forward Reverend Rainwater's legacy as we serve in our community. You are all free to join me in standing as Trey Cram from Redeemer Evangel Covenant Church provides a message, followed by the leading of the pledges by Kim Brady and the pledge to the, for the pledge to the US flag and Eliana Garza Rojas with the pledge to the Texas flag.
Thank you. Let's pray. God, thank you for this district, and first and foremost, we just ask that you be with the Rainwater family as they're grieving a loss, as well as our city of Carrollton who's grieving the loss. Ask that you be with us and that Reverend Rainwater can be a legacy builder in all of us to pick up the torch, pick up the mantle to serve our community well. Thank for all those who serve, all those who are in transition, as well as all those who may be seeking you during this time. We love you. Jeez, now we pray. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God one and indivisible.
As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to our goal of high expectations for all. The board uses this goal to go to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in closed session as stipulated in Texas Government Code 551, commonly known as the Texas Meetings Law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with their attorney, and real estate. For the record, board members present are Marjorie Barnes, Carolyn Benavides, Kim Brady, Eliana Garza Rojas, Paul Gilmore, Randy Shackman, and myself, Cassandra Hatfield. We constitute a quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. Before moving on to the next agenda item, I would like to remind you that the board accepts comments from citizens of the district and from district employing employees. Persons who wish to speak during the audience for guests need to have filled out a form electronically by 1:00 PM today, and when the board addresses Agenda Item 3, they will be invited to the podium to speak if they signed up by 1:00 today. Our next agenda item is item number two, Special Presentations and Recognitions. Karen Rodriguez, Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, President Hatfield, Dr. Eldridge, and esteemed members of the board. As our last Chick-fil-A at Trinity Mills sponsored CFB Champion Award this year, we are honored to recognize a special family who always demonstrates excellence and compassion, the Burkesses. Just to give a little bit of background, Casey's Run was named in honor of Casey Burkis, a student whose passion for serving others, especially her peers with special needs, left a lasting impact on our community. Her legacy lives on through the spirit of this event and through the generosity of her family. This year, Candy M. Mel Burkis made a remarkable gift which exceeded $30,000. And this year, we also celebrated a milestone, the 25th anniversary of the CFB ISD All-Stars, whose athletes are the heart of this event and the reason we run. Please join me in welcoming and recognizing Candy M. Mel Burkis as this month's CFB Champion. In addition, we also have a special presentation tonight. Please welcome Addison Derrick, a 2025 graduate, who will say a few words about the true impact of the Burkis family's contribution to CFB ISD.
Good evening, President Hatfield, members of the CFB ISD School Board, Dr. Eldridge, and district leadership. My name is Addison Derrick, and I'm a graduate of RL Turner High School. And for the past four years, I've had the honor of serving as a student coordinator for Casey's Run. And tonight, I speak on behalf of the student coordinators and volunteers across our district who have carried this mission forward with energy, compassion, and purpose. Casey's Run continues as a way to honor the life of Casey Brekis, a student who gave her time and heart in service to her peers with disabilities. Though I have never met Casey personally, I have come to know her through the way people talk about her, with respect, with warmth, and with deep admiration for her joy and servant's heart. Through this event, we've all had the chance to step into that same spirit of inclusion that she lived so fully. This year, our plans were big, and so was our disappointment when our race day was rained out. But we, what we created together didn't disappear with the weather. Because what makes Casey's Run special isn't just the course, or the T-shirts, or the finish line, it's the community. It's the belief that all of our All-Stars matter and that they deserve to be seen, celebrated, and supported. That belief came to life on campuses across our district where students of all ages took the lead. And one campus in particular answered that call in an extraordinary way. La Viuda Elementary, under the leadership of their campus liaison, Coach Tom Castillo, rallied an incredible 466 students, families, and staff to join the cause. Their dedication sets a powerful example, and we are proud to recognize them as the very first recipients of the All-In for our All-Stars Award. Over these last four years, I've learned that leadership isn't about being in charge, it's about choosing to serve. Casey's Run has taught me that inclusion is more than an idea. It's an action, and I'm a better person because of what I have learned from this experience and the people that has brought into my life. And so, on behalf of the 2025 Casey's Run Student Coordinators, from one group of students to another, it is my honor to present a gift of $47,000 to the CFB ISD All-Stars. May it be used to grow opportunity, to spark joy, and to keep building a world where every student belongs on the track, in the classroom, and far beyond. Thank you.
And now for our student recognitions. With more than 20 million players worldwide, flag football is a rapidly growing sport that offers girls physical and mental fitness, inclusivity, sportsmanship, and teamwork. This year, over 100 CFB ISD student athletes geared up to compete in the Dallas Cowboys Girls Flag Football League, making CFB's debut in the sport. Here tonight are the coaches and student representatives who led our four teams this year. Please come up as I call your name to be recognized before the board. Representing Creekview High School, Coach Nick Medina and Student Representative Eliana Representing Newman Smith High School, Coach Crystal Bettis and Student Representative Haley Representing RL Turner High School, Coach JC Salazar and Student Representative Alondra And representing Ranchview High School, Assistant Coach Latasha Martin and Student Representative Anaya Elam. Representative Anaya Elam. Our teams had a successful first season with Ranchview even advancing to the playoffs this year. Yeah. We are so incredibly proud of all of our athletes and coaches and are grateful for our partnership with the Dallas Cowboys for making this season possible. We cannot wait to see what y'all accomplish next year. So, thank you for your hard work and congratulations.
That concludes tonight's recognitions. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, and even more important, thank you to our students and the Burkeis family. Addison, it was great to hear the wonderful work that students made out of a situation where it got rained out, and then they took it and made it something that was impactful across our community, rain or shine. So, that's incredible and representative of what our students do in CFB. And then also, congratulations to the girls' flag football teams for the inaugural year. I couldn't be more excited about this opportunity for girls. All right, at this time, we'll move to Item 2B, which is the President's Report. And the only thing I have is that I wanted to take a moment to recognize Ms. Herbochik and her nine years of service on this board. During her time with us, she brought thoughtful insight and a true focus to excellence, her invaluable knowledge of the history of the district, which started well before she ever came on the board. She sat in the seat where you all are sitting tonight and watched countless board meetings before she ever ran. Heard her knowledge of finance and bonds was evident throughout her service. And as many of you know, public service is not easy, and school board in particular requires courage, conviction, and an unwavering belief in the importance of public education. So, on the behalf of the Board of Trustees, we are so grateful for her time, her energy, and the care that she invested in her service during this district. And as we cared for her contributions, my personal favorite Taraism was "Hope is not a strategy." And I have no doubt that her history and service will continue to shape our conversations behind this dais and the decisions moving forward, so may we always remember that hope is not a strategy. Next, we'll move to Item 2C, which is Committee Updates. Board members, would anybody like to give updates on district committees that you've served on? Ms. Brady?
Hi, I'll give an update on the bond committee. The bond packages of five and three are in the works. Five is being laid and should be 100% complete by December throughout the district. We learned about our 18-plus special education program, AKA the special ed vision for our students who are 18 to 22 years old, which will create a real work environment for our special needs students. We heard about the extensive renovations to Blalack Middle School and where the kids will be moving and how they'll be operating when school resumes again in the fall. We, finally, the money allocated for the now consolidated campuses, which is approximately 131.5 million, will be discussed at the Bond Oversight Committee meeting in July. And I also know that that's also an item agenda for Item Number 6, 6C to be exact, which we will talk about later in this meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Brady. Any additional updates? Ms. Garza Rojas?
For the Legislative Committee, House Bill 2 in Texas is a major public education funding law that was recently signed by Greg Abbott. It was signed at June 4th. It provides $8.5 billion in new funding for public schools. The key provisions of the House Bill 2 is teacher pay raises, educators will receive permanent salary increases based on experience and district size. For example, teachers with three to four years of experience in districts with 5,000 or fewer students will get a $4,000 raise, while those with five-plus years will earn $8,000. In larger districts, more than 5,000 students, teachers with three to four years of experience will receive $2,500, and those with five-plus years will get $5,000. More details to come in August, where we will be providing a legislative presentation. School funding increase, the basic of allotment funding per student will rise by $55 per student, bringing it to $6160. Operational expenses, schools will receive $1.3 billion to help cover costs like insurance premiums, utilities, and other essential expenses. Special education, additional funds will be allocated to sped programs and campus safety improvements. And teacher incentive allotment expansion, more funding will be available for high-performing teachers who demonstrate improvements in student outcomes. House Bill 2 is expected to go into effect September 1st. While the funding is a significant boost, education advocates will say it doesn't fully account for inflation and ongoing budget deficits. We also have House Bill 1178, and I'm actually going to hand this over to Madam President Hatfield, because this is something that she's been working on for quite some time.
Thank you. First of all, in regards to school funding, I do think it's important to note, while this is historical funding, there are still many challenges that school districts across the state are dealing with, like Ms. Garza Rojas said. And the strategy that is used is definitely putting allotments in specific places where they're needed, but we will be working with administration over the course of the next several months as we finalize the budget for next year and see the final implications for the district. House Bill 1178, I am just so proud of the work that we did on that. There she is, Tammy in the back. So, House Bill 1178, its purpose is to provide a temporary certification for teachers who are coming from out of state. And we worked on this with our legislatures in the 88th legislative session and ultimately could not get it across the finish line, but it is currently headed to the governor's desk. And what I think we all learned through the process was how much work and effort goes into getting a bill to pass, from getting it through the chambers, phone calls in my car. One day, my daughter said, "Mom, you're calling them again?" And I said, "Yes, I am, because another step happened." And there's about 30 steps, if you read the Texas Legislature online, that has to go through. And she goes, "Why are you calling them again?" And I said, "Because they need to know this is important to us." And not only was it me, but it was other board members and administrative staff from HR went down and testified on behalf of the bill. And while it is not a historical bill, it is something that does have an impact on us here, and it also creates a movement for us to be stronger and know that our voice is heard and that we can make a difference whenever we persevere. So, I'm really proud of the work that we did on that. Any additional updates from board members? Ms. Barnes?
Just wanted to report on the Safety and Security Committee meeting that happened yesterday. One item that was really exciting was there is a Spotlight on School Safety Award that's given out in the fall and in the spring, and then there's an overall winner that's chosen from those two. And CFB ISD had won the Fall Award for a video that they did, so they went up against the Spring winner, and they won overall award for 2025, so that's really exciting. And then, this meeting is always my favorite one of the year because it is the Sentinel of Safety Project. Videos and PowerPoints from different elementary schools, and some middle schools, some high schools, where the security team at each school kind of takes a project and does it and comes up with solutions, and it's just so exciting. And there are lots and lots of just amazing, amazing submissions, and our security officers are just doing amazing things and really teaching our kids in fun ways to really take care of themselves, take care of their friends, and look out around them and be aware. And so, it was a great meeting, and yeah, so it's very exciting things. So, thank you, Safety and Security Teams.
Awesome. Congratulations for all the hard work. I know that public service announcement was also watched all around, so congratulations. Congratulations to our schools. I do have one additional update from the Governance Subcommittee, which Ms. Herbochik was the chair of. So, on May 16th, the committee met, which was Ms. Herbochik, Ms. Barnes, and myself. The purpose of our meeting was to ensure we are abiding by our two-week timeline for the reviewing request. We discussed two questions that had come from board members and some policy updates that had come from administration. We followed up with the submitters of the inquiries and tracked the outcomes in our tracking mechanism. Now that we've been serving on this committee for a year, we've really seen the cycle of how policies come before the board and how BOPA updates or the Board Operating Procedures come before the board. And so, we have developed a structure for moving forward of bucketing our policy updates, just so the board's aware. One bucket is if there's TASB recommended, which typically comes from legislation or legal updates. The second bucket is administration recommendations, which is a review request on administration based on administrative procedures. And then finally, the board member request. We continue to develop our systems and tracking. This is the first full year that this committee has been working towards this goal of tracking governance for policy. So, additionally, Ms. Barnes and I then met with Mr. Marsh on May 22nd to review the policies that are being recommended for the June board meeting and to confirm our intent to begin a full policy review beginning in the '25-'26 school year. So, just so board members are aware, we are planning for TASB to do a review of one to two sections annually until we cycle through the entire policy, all the sections of board policy, and then that would just become a continual practice of this board. The annually, some sections are updated, and we're going through all of our policies to make sure that they are in compliance, they're already in compliance legally, but also looking at our local policies. And so, that's going to be a really strategic process that will occur. It will take about five years as we go section by section verifying that all of our policies are as they would need to be. And so, I would like to, I'm going to request that we review this process with administration during a board meeting in the fall. So, I will work with administration to ensure the board is fully aware of what that process looks like and the community is aware of our intent to constantly be improving and ensuring we're in compliance. And with that, are there any other committee updates? All right, we'll move to 2D, which is District Announcements. Dr. Eldridge?
Okay, lots of announcements, but first, I want to thank Trey Croom. Thank you so much for being here tonight, but also thank you for, I'm going to start crying, but thank you for all the work you've done in our district. He is moving to Seattle, and I can't thank you enough for your friendship and just your mentorship for all of our kids. And we, you can come back anytime, and don't forget about us, by the way. And then, so thank you for everything. And I also want to thank Victor, who's here tonight. So, Victor's been working with our students at several campuses, and I challenged him with asking him, with all the work and mentorship he's done with our students, did it make a difference? And discipline and attendance was a big factor, and he just sent me the report today. So, thank you, Victor, for mentoring our students and making a difference. So, you two are so key in our community, so I really want to thank you for being here and thank you for all the work. We can have coffee anytime before you leave. But also, we celebrated graduation. We celebrated 1,700 students that graduated in our district. And in the class of 2025, there was over $25 million in scholarships that our students received, so that's a huge celebration. We can't do that without all of our staff and teachers and our administrators that believe in all of our students in our community. We had four successful farewell events. We saw alumni, we had food trucks, we had tears, excitement, elected officials, so everybody joined in to have a celebration for our efforts. Our campuses will always be CFB family. Our Creekview Moot Court, again, won a national championship. This marks the fifth national championship that they have received with our district. So, wow, I mean, they just travel and do great things. Blanton Elementary received the Lighthouse School Leader Award. They do a leader-in-me program. The Lighthouse School designation is the highest level of leadership that you can receive for a campus, and so they are teaching our students at elementary what it means to be a leader, have good culture in your school, and also show academic achievement. And our CFB ISD Music Education has been designated one of the best music communities in music for the 18th consecutive year. So, that's a huge blessing. It's so great to see our kids perform. So, that's all the announcements I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Eldridge. Great things are happening in CFB. We are going to move past Item 2E and into Item 2F, the update from the Educational Foundation.
Good evening, President Hatfield, Dr., excuse me, Dr. Eldridge and esteemed school board members. We are thrilled to be before you tonight with exciting updates from the Educational Foundation. Since our last report, we've been pretty busy awarding student scholarships, announcing book vending machine grant recipients, and much more. First and foremost, we give thanks tonight to our legacy donors. Because of these district and community giants, we are able to award the largest dollar amount in scholarships in CFB Educational Foundation history. Seventy-nine students, all seniors and one junior, received scholarships totaling $105,000. We are, thank you, we are so incredibly humbled to stand on the shoulders of these community legends to continue their dream of post-secondary pursuits for our CFB students. Shifting gears, in April, we announced a new opportunity for campuses that were interested in acquiring a book vending machine, which is part, I wonder if you've ever heard me mention it before, wink, wink. It's part of our literacy initiative. We launched the program, and we invited all the CFB campuses who were interested to apply for a grant. We received several applications, and the decision was difficult, but we narrowed the field to two campuses, two finalists. The recipients of the new book vending machines were overcome with pure joy and excitement on May 15th, when Directors of the Ed Foundation showed up absolutely, completely unannounced with balloons, with checks, with flowers, with noise makers, cheers, chants, and more to surprise the campus principals. Now, we are quite accustomed to surprising teachers and educators with grants, but we've never been able to surprise a principal. So, the reveal team was awesome. They met in cars outside of the two schools, signaling each other, think highest-level spy, signaling each other with flashing our car lights and texting each other, gently tapping on the horns and the like to make sure there was absolute, an absolute full and complete surprise. Led by district leaders and campus security, we assembled outside the campuses, we entered those front offices and waited for the principal to come before we started, before we started our reveal chants. And if you've ever been with us on one of these, there's no dry eyes, and there wasn't a dry eye this time either. We thank our district personnel, and because of them, we were able to capture some great video, some great images that you'll find on our social media, and more. We want to extend a special thank you to Joe La Puma, Francisco Miranda, and security Adam Lewin for helping us pull this off. This was a feat we, I don't know, that we really thought we could do. The recipients of the two book vending machines are Blanton Elementary and Davis Elementary. We are so excited. For those curious, we now have book vending machines on 16 campuses, and of course, you know we're not done. This summer, we'll be launching a webpage, so be on the look, that's dedicated solely to the Book Vending Machine Initiative. We'll have video, we'll have images, we'll have some testimony, we'll have donor testimony, and more. Just as a reminder, this started, we started this with one machine in 2022 as a part of our innovative grant program, which you'll hear more about as we get through the year. We love surprises. You all know that. Speaking of surprises, I'm joined tonight with some directors from the Educational Foundation and on the dais as well, who are here to join me to announce a new district recognition award. Very few people in this group know what we're doing tonight. Everyone knows, everyone knows that we reward campuses and classrooms with monetary grants. We award new educators with funding to help offset costs in their first-time classrooms. We award and assist with a variety of student initiatives, the CFB Giving House, and more. We're always looking for ways to be more relevant to our school family, our CFB family. So, tonight, we are excited to announce the above and beyond departmental recognition awards with a monetary grant. awards with a monetary grant. Monthly, we'll be recognizing CFB departments for their work that goes above and beyond the call of duty to create safe, secure, and healthy environments for our students. So tonight, without further ado, we'd like to recognize the Strategic Communications Department with a grant in the amount of $1,000 for their work above and beyond the call of duty. Thank you. We'd like to ask Chief Communications Officer Karen Rodriguez and members of the communication team that aren't working the meeting tonight, to be able to join us at the dais. We'd like to present them with a special award and a quick photo. So as they're assembling, and they'll be in, in front of us, as the group assembles, I will close and share that we will have, of course, more, more exciting news in August. The Educational Foundation remains completely committed to CFB and in making a difference in the lives of our students and our staff. We thank you all for your continued support. Congratulations.
Thank you for the update, Donna, and it's very exciting to see our departments also recognized as they serve our kids and our, our school districts so well. And I'm excited to hear about the website that's coming for the book vending machines. That'll be so fun.
Super excited, can hardly wait to unveil.
I'm not shocked.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to back up to item 6E, update from the PTA.
Good evening, President Hatfield and esteemed members of the board. Our PTA president Stacy Homan is not here, so I am the substitute at this point. And I won't take long, but I wanted to remind and say about the Texas PTA launch coming up, it's between, it sits on July 19th, which is a Saturday, July 19th and the 20th. It's at the Dallas Hilton Anethal. I am registered for it. This will be my third year of attending the Texas PTA launch. It's a great event and I would encourage everybody at the CFB ISD, and it would be nice to have a large delegation of CFB ISD show up at the Texas PTA launch. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. I know that the launch is something that PTA really looks forward to every year. Great training I've attended myself. So thank you for being here and for reminding everyone of that. At this time, we're going to take a brief pause. You are all welcome to stay for the entirety of the meeting, but if you need to step out, we completely understand. So we'll pause for a brief moment and allow you to do so. Everyone is also welcome to stay. Our next item is item number three, audience for guests. At this time, we did not have anyone submit anything for audience for guests, so we will move forward. Our next item is action, or item number four, non-action items for discussion. Our first one is A, which is the School Health Advisory Council Annual Report. Ms. Leek.
All right. Dr. Eldridge and esteemed board, good evening. I'm Sandra Leek and I serve as the advisor to the Shack. And so I would like to introduce April Hooper Christiansen, who will be doing, being the presenter this evening.
Good evening, Dr. Eldridge and the school board of trustees. I am April Hooper Christiansen and I am the chair for the School Health Advisory Council, and I would like to introduce my co-chair for this next year, Zohar Bhamol. He is a man of many hats, as y'all can see. So I just wanted to acknowledge his role, current and future, with our wonderful council. I am here tonight to present our report for the 2024 and 2025 school year. The, let me go ahead. The School Health Advisory Council, which is also referred to as Shack, is a group of individuals and we represent segments of the community and we are appointed to serve at the district level to advise CFB ISD Board of Trustees on coordinated school health programming and its impact on student health, learning, and such. The coordinated school health model, as we follow, has eight components. This is health services, nutritional services, healthy and safe school environment, counseling and mental health services, staff wellness and promotion, parent and community involvement, physical education, and health education. The Shack provides an effective structure for creating and implementing age-appropriate sequential health programs, as well as early intervention and prevention strategies that local families and community stakeholders can support. During the 2024-25 school year, we had our four regular meetings on the dates noted in our slide, and it's, I believe, let's see, nope. It's also in your briefing packet. And in our report, which is in your briefing packet, we also have the topics for our various presentations. The School Health Advisory Council this year was approached to explore weather guidelines. So our current elementary weather guidelines have no outdoor recess at a heat index of 95 or greater and no outdoor recess if it is below 32 degrees or meeting 32 degrees. These guidelines have been in place since before COVID and Perry Weather is the application system that we utilize as the primary source for measurements. We explored this recommendation due to parent and teacher outreach over the past couple years. As we all know, in Texas, it gets extremely hot and the heat index typically drops below 95 in late September to early October. And the school year begins August 12th this year. And that is six to nine weeks after the start of school of no outdoor recess. And students not getting daily unstructured recess can make for some very fidgety youngsters and it can disrupt the learning environment when they are having that extra energy. So we have a rec, new recommendations in regards to the heat index. We recommend that the following recess guidelines for elementary school, which we reviewed from a variety of sources, from other Texas independent school districts, and we also researched from the Academy, American Academy of Pediatrics, the National Weather Service, as well as we had a plan reviewed by our district medical advisor, Dr. Richard Rivera. And all weather will be obtained from the Perry Weather System. And we, we will utilize select closest weather stations for each campus and select hourly forecasts between the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and then again, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So two checks at least in the day on the heat index. Because the morning temperatures are typically lower than afternoon temperatures, those two index heat levels should be determined each day when deciding outdoor activity safety for each student. Again, using the Perry Weather for guidance on the safety of being outside during thunderstorms and lightning as well. So as you can see from our graphic here, we recommend outdoor recess be great, a green zone of students can stay outside comfortably and play for approximately 30 minutes. Please provide water breaks and shade as well. And that's a heat index, heat index below 89. Heat index from 90 to 98, let's use some caution. Monitor the conditions during the time, allowed water before, during, and after, and play in shade areas if available. 99 to 100, let's start limiting this. It's limited activity to 20 minutes or less. Students be allowed water before, during, and after, and consider the actual temperature and allow for a cool down period. And then index of 104 or above, no outdoor play. All students should remain inside. So the heat index is what it feels like outside. It's not the actual temperature, but it's, it's the temperature of what our bodies read and feel, or an effective temperature. As relative humidity increases, the air seems warmer because the body is less able to cool itself off via evaporation or perspiration. As the index rises, so do health risks. During times of access heat, the following precautions will need to be taken for outdoor activity included to but not limited to recess, physical education classes, which is also referred to as PE, and/or outdoor field trips. Students should be hydrated prior to outdoor activities and drinking water shall be easily accessible. During extended periods of outdoor activity, approximately 30 to 35 minutes or greater than, periodic drinking should be enforced. Under no circumstances will access to drinking water be used as punishment or motivation. In addition to these precautions, the campus administrator or nurse will assess the anticipated heat index and the air quality, which is the ozone level, for the day and email or announce an activity advisory to all applicable staff. Steps for assessing the heat index and air quality, which is again, the ozone level, can be found on Perry Weather. To counter that, wind chill. Cold weather, well, let me read this, I'm sorry. Wind chill at 33 degrees or below is considered a danger zone. No outdoor play. All students should remain inside. Wind chill 34 degrees to 40 degrees, let's use caution, monitor the conditions, every or have recess be 20 to 30 minutes. Students should be dressed appropriately for the weather. Allow for water and breaks. And then wind chill 41 degrees or above, students can be outside comfortably and play for approximately 30 minutes. Allow again for water and breaks. Now for both the heat and the wind chill factors, the campus administrators ultimately make that final decision for going outside for recess and are responsible for communicating this to the teachers each day. And that's what is emboldened and underlined underneath both graphics. Data indicates ozone concentrations typically occur after recess and end of day and should not be the main factor for deciding outdoor play. Always consider individual medical plans of students. And CFB ISD policy states elementary students shall participate in daily unrestricted recess. So during times of excessive cold weather, the following precautions will be taken for all outdoor physical activity, including but not limited to recess, physical education, also known as PE, classes, and/or outdoor field trips. Teacher and staff should be aware of the wind chill factor and take appropriate precautions during cold weather. If a student does not have adequate warm clothing to participate in outdoor activity, such, such clothing should be provided or the student is excused from the activity. Students should not have recess or physical education classes outside when the temperature or wind chill factor drops below 33 degrees. Again, we did a lot of research. We contacted other districts such as Austin ISD, Richardson ISD, Louisville, Irving, and Houston ISD. We also not only obtained documents to them, but we spoke to some of their coordinators with their health and physical education departments. And we explored resources from the Academy, excuse me, American Academy of Pediatrics, and again consulted with the CFB ISD medical advisor, Dr. Richard Rivera. We would really like to thank and acknowledge the assistance and offer a special thank you to you guys, our board of representatives, and especially Carolyn B. Venidas. She's been wonderful for her participation, questions, their thought, thought provoking and probing, and efforts with the Shack. So thank you, dear. And we would also like to express appreciation to CFB ISD parents and staff, along with our community members, for your insights and contributions this year. Do you have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I just wanted to mention that actually the teacher that got this started, beginning of this year, Desa Bentley from Country Place Elementary, brought me a problem, which was it's 100 degrees and it's 8:30 in the morning and if we can't go outside, the kids are climbing the walls, which other than I turned, took to the policy committee, which the policy committee turned to you all and there we have it. So thank you all very much for this. But I do want to say that if there are issues that come up in the district between teachers or professionals, please let us know. I mean, if there's something we can do to help, we want to do that and help you. So we're trying to help answer, answer or solve any problems that you all see as well. So please come free to talk, come talk to us or bring us an idea and maybe we can carry it through.
And it doesn't have to be just pertaining to students. The Shack also addresses staff concerns and thoughts as well. Any other questions?
Ms. Hooper Christiansen, send our thanks back to the Shack committee. This is a labor of love. You guys worked really hard on this and, and I think our intent is always to provide the best experience for our students and keep our teachers happy as students can play and get some of that energy out. So I really appreciate the work you guys did this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, our next agenda item is 4B, financial update. Ms. Settle.
All right. Well, good evening again, President Hatfield, Dr. Eldridge and trustees. I've brought a presentation to you to update you where we are financially at this point in the year. You know, we are in our current year, but we're also planning for next year and I've already got my team ready to start on the audit. So it's always an interesting time when you've hit past the, the mid-year point. But when we look at where we are going to be this year, there's a few key factors I'd like to just lean into. And you know, the first one I always get this time of year is salaries. And it's a difficult decision to pause on any kind of raise recommend. And it's a difficult decision to pause on any kind of raise recommendation, but in light of what was going on down in Austin, it is the most prudent at this time. And then consider the effective date for any potential raise. Those are the current discussions that we're having. Because our money that the governor so graciously signed into law yesterday doesn't begin until September one. So any effective raise that's starting before then would be an additional expenditure that hasn't been planned for. So the HB2, now law, not draft, does also allow for the additional allotment for non-teaching staff, but it does exclude administration. So that's another consideration we'll have to evaluate as we go forward in our new compensation that we have to find funding for that if that's something we're going to pursue. And as we look towards the end of the year, you will see an August budget amendment to ensure that we get the most points on the first, because I like me a good A rating. And so there is some function code, actual metrics that we want to make sure that we hit, and so that's a custom that we've done here in the district. And then the last thing is weather. We're not immune to weather, but luckily we are, we have capacity to absorb it in the budget so far, but I know storm season isn't over. So, but to date, we have absorbed our major roof repairs. So I just wanted to break it down a little bit about revenues versus expenditures. Expenditures are trending very predictably. If you look at last year, it's very comparable as far as where we are in spending to our budget. However, we've had some pretty significant impacts to revenue this year. And the first was, you know, we are very close to making our ADA, so I expect that our state aid should come in as expected. We do have some impact to our local tax revenue, because every time the state changes our homestead exemption, it does make some of our prior year tax statements eligible for adjustment. And so that has kind of a trickle-down effect. And the most significant impact to revenue as of April was the Shar's revenue. It took a significant hit with both the 2023 cost review, along with the federal audit for the 2011 school year. Fun fact, the federal government can audit grant funds as far back as they want to. And so we were affected by the 2011 penalty. I had hoped that I was going to be able to bring good news from HB500, that where the state had set aside some proposed dollars to reimburse districts for this penalty, but I am not able to bring that good news because it died on the House side. So that's where we are. We're not without strategies. We've had a really good collaboration between the departments and the campuses on controlling our spending and being strategic about every dollar that we spend, not just that we have budgeted. Debt service fund is, you will also see an August amendment if it is needed for any potential bond sale or defeasance, that we could potentially take action on in July. So what would that look like? That would look like revenues increasing by any potential bond proceeds, and you would also see an increase in expenditures for any early defeasance. Defeasance is a big fancy word for paying bonds early and saving some interest. So always, always game for that. So now we're going to look ahead a little bit about what's headed for our way in September as we start a new year. And this slide is already antiquated because the governor signed HB2. So, and I just wanted to, you know, caution, you know, both the community and the board when you see information being spread around in legislative years. This particular information was promulgated by the Legislative Budget Board, and they didn't have all of our most current data. So I'd just like to remember that, like, we are the owners of our own data, and there's a lot of partnership between Student Services and PMS and my office on making sure that we're giving the most accurate projections, because the worst thing we could do as a disservice to the public is give you bad information to make a decision. So, all things being equal, we met briefly with the Finance Committee yesterday to review a potential model run of what HB2 looks like for CFB ISD. And in true legislative fashion, there is no money without strings. And so our new money for MNO above our current law looks to be about twelve million dollars, but that will come with compensation increases both for teachers and for select non-teaching staff of six-point-six million dollars, in addition to an estimated, when Mo, Casey and I palled around, we thought our district contribution hovers around eleven-point-seven percent of related payroll expenditures. That's your TRS contribution, your active care, anything that's required for that compensation. And so it would appear in some runs that we would have an additional five-point-two million dollars towards our revenue shortfall. But that is also obligated by certain special education requirements and additional allotments. The one piece of good news, I can say that we had less spending requirements, is compensatory education, but we never have any problem spending there. We're really good at dedicating the right dollars to those programs. So, again, there's a lot of professional development in my future. I wish I could bring you a lot more exact data, but I wanted to make sure you stay informed. In your board drives, you've been given a side-by-side to help interpret the law just a little bit, because if you read HB2, it's a pretty dry read, and it does help interpret a little bit, especially for those non-teaching staff codes and some other areas. But I'm excited to work alongside my new friends in Student Services and in the PMS Department as we are going to be challenged with how we monitor the effective vouchers on our state revenue. So that's another piece that we are looking forward to, you know, challenges. It's fun. So again, our draft assumptions, we'll keep presenting these and reminding the community of how we come to our data, but there is a piece that we will be needing to evaluate on how homestead exemption increases, the slight increase in basic allotment, and the interplay between that and the property values will change compression. So it may not be the type of tax compression we've seen in the past where we had two extra cents, you know, compressed on MNO. It may not look like that. So again, I'll keep you informed. And, you know, when we're talking about pennies, we might as well, you know, kick this off. The board has previously authorized all the golden pennies and the copper pennies. And this is nerd school finance talk for what's subject to recapture and what isn't. So all of our golden pennies are, we get the most bang for our buck on a tax rate. But when you think about the copper pennies that has been previously voted on by voters, it doesn't make sense to pursue too many more pennies, because sixty-four percent of that is subject to recapture. So we're not really getting the full measure of every penny after this. But once you've got them, you tend to not give them back. So that's how we calculate the tax rate, is the maximum compressed tax rate plus previously authorized pennies. And speaking of recapture, here's a little bit of a trend. I think it's important to note where, how recapture can affect the finances that you're looking at. So the black figures there are figures that are put into the revenue dollars, revenue numbers, but the red line with the recapture amounts, those are expenditures. So you can see sometimes whenever you look at prior financial statements, there has been a huge swing from nineteen-twenty to twenty-three-twenty-four on what recapture looks like in this district. And just, you know, for definition purposes, recapture is the local revenue, the local taxes generated by the district in excess of our entitlement, and that goes back to the state to be spread to other less property wealthy districts. And so the entitlement, if you want to focus on that, is refined ADA. How often are students are in the district, attending school, and hopefully getting them there before snapshot and keeping them there as members of the district all the way to the end of school. So I tend to focus a little bit more on ADA, because that's something we can control. We have engaging leadership on campuses. We know who our kids are. We know when they're not there, and picking up the phone when they're not there after a couple of days and saying, hey, where's little Johnny? I hope he's not sick, right? And so working with our registrars and our attendance clerks is going to be a really critical piece to affecting revenue going forward. And so I did tell Leon I would give him a week. And last but not least, you know, we're ever set on our priorities, because, you know, the district has goals, and we're going to ensure that we stay competitively priced for compensation, which is why we have a TASB salary study going on right now to make sure that we're purposeful in all the new money that comes into the district. But it is a reality that we have to stay focused on our long-term financial stability. And in CV 2030, the district has been set the goal of keeping four months of operating expenditures in the fund balance. So every time we talk about what budget might be adopted, it will include that effect on fund balance to make sure we stay lasered focused on our goals. And, you know, last year, last year's budget included some significant capital investments to kind of catch up some replacement cycles, and we're not going to let that go by the wayside, because if you keep borrowing from those replacement cycles, then that becomes an extra line item in a bond campaign, because it balloons so largely that you can't absorb that in one year. So we're going to stay focused on making sure that we're maintaining our capital assets and investing where appropriate. And we could never get away from safety and security. But we're fortunate in the climate we're at now that there is additional funding for safety and security, and it doesn't all have to come out of the general fund. So let's talk a little bit about what potential expenditure impacts are headed our way. So I had the folks in payroll run who our current teaching staff is. And so when I say teaching staff, I mean, for my PMS nerds out there, Role 87 teachers of record, and we have fourteen-hundred of those folks. Two-hundred-and-fourteen of them have what Ms. Rojas, Iliana Garza-Rojas mentioned before, three to four years of experience that would receive a twenty-five-hundred permanent compensation increase. So that's about a half a million dollars to the district. And then we have over a thousand teaching staff with more than five years of experience. So that's five-point-seven million. So in that compensation increase requirement spending, six-point-two of that is teaching staff. So the bulk of our new money is going directly to the teachers in the classroom. Again, we have another little pocket of money. It's about eight-hundred thousand dollars that would go to salary adjustments for non-teaching staff, and then we'd have to determine what we, the district can afford for the remaining pay grades. And, you know, initially at the last work study, I just wanted to lean in and celebrate that the steep cuts first came from central admin. We presented every SLT area with their payroll and non-payroll, so that means people and things budget, and we asked them to cut at a minimum of five percent this year. Some came in, like our overachievers in communications, they wanted to do their ten percent all in one, all in one year, and we're going to keep pushing those strategic cuts to make sure that, at the end of the day, we have to right the ship. There is no magic wand from Austin that's going to bail out the nineteen-million-dollar revenue shortfall. So I just, this is back-of-the-envelope math, because we still have a lot of unknowns to define, but if we're starting where we left off with our budget deficit, and we took our reductions from district administration, and the elimination of any possibility of recouping our Shar's revenue, not to mention the high-level HB2 projections, we're starting right now with the tough job, starting at ten million dollars of a revenue shortfall. So we still have a lot of work to do. But at the end of the day, I've got great partners, and I am excited and up to the task. It is something to note also that we are still staying true to our key takeaways from the last meeting. We are staffing competitively and adequately, again, the capital investment, and we're going to meet our strategic long-term plan. It just can't happen in one year. It'll take, as long as it took to get to a deficit budget, it will probably take just as long to recoup it. And a little bit, a little note about the debt service, this is our planned, you know, budgeted revenue for the next year and the related expenditures to our current bond schedule. Again, if we make any other decisions related to a bond issuance, that would change this budget. And with that, I would take, any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Settle. Board members, any questions or comments? Ms. Barnes?
I just wanted to ask one question about the HB2. You had talked about the allotment for non-teaching staff. Could you give myself and everyone up here and the general public kind of an idea of what those positions are that are going to be receiving some of that money?
Right. The non-teaching staff allotment that would be eligible for those compensation is nurses, counselors, your custodians, your bus drivers, but it is specifically excluding all central administration and campus administration from principals on up, including your average accounts payable supervisor, anybody who supervises anybody else.
Thank you.
Additional questions, board members? Ms. Garza-Rojas?
Thank you for your presentation. I had a question that I'm sure the community and all of our staff would like clarification on, raises. And I know you mentioned it at the beginning of this presentation, but for clarification for our community, for our staff, everybody that works in our district, we're waiting until a specific date. Is that correct?
Correct. We're waiting to make raises effective to match the dollars coming into the district. So it's just like, you know, I'll just give you an example. My daughter's going to be a teacher this fall, and her first paycheck doesn't come to September. She's not going to go buy a new car yet, right? So we have to match the dollars coming in to the dollars going out. And that's just being prudent in our current financial situation, and it is completely the same roadmap we took in 2019 when HB3 did the same thing on the compensation increases.
Okay. I'm very thankful that our legislative season has come to an end, so we can get back on track for our next two years. So thank you for the update, and thank you for letting our community know.
I appreciate it.
Additional questions or comments?
I do have a question about the recapture. So with tax compression, are we, I saw it like drastically dropped. Are we still anticipating that we're going to fall in recapture next year with tax compression? Or do we know?
We don't know. I mean, I would expect it not to increase too much. You know, like, this current year was fourteen, and then it, you know, with the compression, it dipped down to seven, seven-point-eight. So, you know, I don't have a template yet to accurately represent that. I'll probably have it before the Fourth of July. Maybe that'll be my Independence Day.
And thank you very much for the information. And then my other question was about the early defeasance. Is that, that plan to pay, to, you may have to help me with the wording, but is the plan to do that, is that tied to 6C, or is that already happening because of prior authorization?
No, it is within the 6C bond order.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Ms. Barnes?
I just have one more comment. I know that with the reductions and the expenditures from each of these departments, I know that wasn't easy. I know that was difficult for every department to make, so I just want to thank you guys for taking that time and for doing such hard work that was probably really hard decisions sometimes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Settle. Our next update is the consolidation update. For C, Mr. Marsh? Mr. Marsh?
Dr. Eldridge, President Hatfield, honorable members of the board. Tonight, we're here to provide an overview of the consolidation process and an update. The outline for tonight will consist of, how did we get here? What drives the process? Priorities, outcomes, and appreciation. Communications update will be provided by our Chief Communications Officer, Karen Rodriguez, followed by our Assistant Superintendent of Leadership and Learning, Kim Holcomb. Will then be followed, because that's not enough, will then be followed by Assistant Superintendent of Operations, Chris Moore. Then I'll close out with moving forward and then we'll go into questions and answer. We want to remind everyone of the facts behind the most asked question. Why did we have to consolidate? The answer is simple, but not easy. Because not making a change would have compromised CFB's ability to deliver the highest degree of education in the long run. Over the past several years, enrollment at some campuses has dropped by as much as 25 to 30%. This is not unique to CFB. All of our neighboring districts are experiencing a similar reality. This has led to very small class sizes, fewer programs, and rising costs to keep underutilized campuses open. At the same time, some of these buildings require significant maintenance and upgrades. The reality is that continuing to operate more campuses than was needed was not sustainable and it wasn't fair. This wasn't about consolidating schools. It was about protecting CFB's mission. The decision was made to consolidate so that the board and administration could increase in the investment in students, staff, programs, and support instead of maintaining highly inefficient facilities. And in doing so, what matters most was preserved, the quality of education we offer, the care we show our students, staff, and the strength of our future. Imagine a commercial airplane that carries 200 passengers, has a full crew, stocked meals, baggage handling, fuel, maintenance costs, salaries, but only 120 passengers show up to fly. The plane takes off, the costs do not go down, and they don't change. The project or the projection is there will be even fewer customers in the future, which will be compounded by the rate of inflation. Every seat becomes progressively more expensive to operate. That's exactly what happens when a school operates far below capacity. The building is open, the staff is present, but the resources aren't being used efficiently. The cost per student becomes unsustainable. The simplistic perspective is there's just not enough students to maintain the number of campuses. And that is the driving force as how we got to where we are today. The foundation that drives the process is UPS. The CFB family has and is delivering what is needed on time. So the guiding principles consist of unified. Our departments have been and are working in an extraordinarily unified way to ensure every student feels seen and heard. Prepared. CFB family is prepared operationally, academically, and emotionally for August 12th, the first day of school. Student-centered. Every action taken, every transfer, every assignment must be student-centered. Priorities, outcomes, and appreciation. As part of our commitment to a successful transition during the campus consolidation process, a high-level overview of the following priorities were established and have been addressed with care, collaboration, and purpose. Student placement. Top priority was ensuring that every reasonable action was taken to place all students from consolidated campuses. This objective has been fully accomplished. In addition, pop-up registration events were held at the consolidated campuses to ease the transition for our families. We are deeply grateful for the Student Services Department for their dedication and service to our community. Staff placement. It was equally a priority to ensure that all consolidated staff were placed in alignment with the board, with your direction to protect all positions for all consolidated employees and recognizing that some individuals are under contract. All consolidated staff have been placed. We sincerely thank the Human Resources Team for their commitment to supporting our staff throughout this process. Special education family outreach. Another key priority was to personally contact every family of our students receiving special education services to discuss placement details. This has been successfully completed. We are especially appreciative of the special services team for their compassion, patience, and personal attention they have shown to all of our families. Technology support. Ensuring that all students and staff from consolidated campuses have the necessary technology equipment is a continuing priority. Much progress has already been made and the remaining work will be completed prior to the start of the school year, once again, August 12th. We thank the technology team for their tremendous efforts and ongoing support. Curriculum and instruction material support. We prioritize supporting campus leaders and teachers in packing and transferring curriculum and instructional materials. This has been accomplished thanks to the coordinated efforts of the Leadership and Learning Team. Their commitment to ensuring our educators are prepared for success is appreciated. Family transition events. To support families during the transition, farewell and welcome events were organized at the affected campuses. These events have taken place and were very well received. Dr. Eldridge mentioned that in her comments earlier. We are grateful to the communications and Leadership and Learning Teams for their organizing meaningful experiences that honor both the past and the future. Effective communication. Timely, high-quality, and multi-platform communication has remained a guiding priority. The communication team has done an outstanding job in ensuring our families are informed, prepared, and supported at every stage. Explains why you got the $1,000 earlier. Support for staff transitions. We committed to ensuring all staff have the materials and logistical support necessary to move into their new classrooms. The operation team has excelled in executing this effort with efficiency and professionalism, and that is an ongoing effort. Resources. Ensuring that financial support is provided to facilitate the consolidation process. The business team has done an excellent job of maintaining the balance of providing financial support while being fiscally responsible. This has not been easy work, but it has been essential and it has been done with integrity. On behalf of the entire executive team, we thank you to every department for your role in supporting our students, families, and staff through this transition. We are one big family and are stronger together. I will now turn over the presentation to our Chief Communications Officer, Karen Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. So I'll keep it short and sweet since our last consolidation update. The communications team is proud that we have been able to work with all of our sister departments. Everybody's been very supportive and very helpful. We've come together to, you know, be able to get the information that we need to communicate. So our collaborative efforts, we collaborated with learning and leadership, we collaborated with HR, we collaborated with student services, we collaborated with everybody in order to keep our community informed. And we will continue to do that as we move forward. We communicated our farewell events, as Mr. Marsh mentioned, so we communicated that on several platforms. We sent press releases out. We did garner some media attention. So Ms., Ms. Principal Dimas Soto was interviewed by two channels, so she made her TV debut. We also communicated, we worked with HR and Leadership and Learning for, to communicate leadership updates. So we made sure that that information was shared with internal and external audiences so that, I'm sure you, you guys saw those, those come out. Moving forward, we will continue to provide support and guidance. We, we will continue to honor the campus legacies. We did have an honorary video that we, that actually Harry worked on and it was great. We got some good feedback and engagement on that. We have been providing guidance and support for the principals at the consolidated campuses as well as the social media ambassadors and webmasters. We provided marquee messaging in English and Spanish for the physical site. So if you drive by one of the four schools, you'll see that we mentioned, you know, thank you for the memories and the, the students who were here will now be welcomed into their receiving campuses. We created memory social media pages, so we did not just delete their existence on the website or on, on the web. We created memory pages for them and we also created pop-ups for their websites. So that way, folks know, you know, if they move into the neighborhood and they see a school and they look them up, they'll know the campuses where their students will now be received. In addition, to support the receiving campuses, Harry Bailey, I'm giving him a big shout out, he has been creating special groups for the principals at the receiving campuses so that they can communicate with the students who are now either rezoned or that they will be receiving from the consolidated campuses. So that way, they're able to communicate with those new students who are not part of their current system in parent square. At some point this summer, that information will roll over in Teams, which is the backend, it's a little bit, going a little bit into much detail, but right now, they're not rolled over, so we've been creating these special groups for them. And so, we will continue to provide the support that's needed, but our team has just been so grateful for everybody, you know, for our colleagues since they've helped us communicate and keep the community informed. So at this point, I will turn this over to our Assistant Superintendent of Leadership and Learning, Kim Holcomb.
Thank you, Karen. So I am most proud of really the collaboration between our one big family, just truly across the entire district. Came together really to execute all of the tasks efficiently and on time while prioritizing instruction during one of our really busiest times of the year. The exceptional teamwork, though, really prompted a great response as well as strong organization, dedication, collaboration, meeting deadlines, and really just having a whatever it takes attitude. It was very, it was neat to see everything coming together. The actions since May, since we met before, we have, our entire staff were onsite at all schools to assist the teachers and the campus administration with inventory, which meant collecting it, identifying it, making sure it was back in our system. That was also collaborative with Ms. Cindy Niedabitz and the library group, which was outstanding work, as well as packing up all the instructional materials for the campuses. In addition, all of our materials were not only accounted for, but they were also then color-coded with labels for efficiency so that they can then be picked up this summer by the operations group and then received at the new campuses. In addition, there was just, of course, great teamwork and collaboration. As I've mentioned, all of our adopted materials were also inventoried and then readjusted for what campuses need additional materials or do we need to then account for them in other ways. And then also, our students were given books to take home for summer reading. And so, that was very exciting and they were super excited to go into some of our rooms. We had our own little book fair, if you will, but it didn't cost anything. They had bags that they were able to take home, books for summer reading, which was really outstanding. I have a little video here. Hopefully, I can get this pulled up. So that's just a little sneak peek there of just some things that were happening on campus and the support that was provided. Obviously, they were super busy with packing, so we didn't get tons of pictures, but that was great information that the district, that the team was able to share. Also, as mentioned earlier, there were wonderful events, welcome events as well as farewell events at the campuses. As mentioned earlier, the welcome orientations were held at all of the receiving campuses that were impacted by rezoning and consolidation on either May the 6th for middle school or for May 13th for the elementaries. They were highly attended. They were very welcoming for our new students and families. They were even designed to help our parents and students not only get to know the new, new staff, but explore the schools, connect with other families, as well as support them with registration and enrollment. It was also a great opportunity to start building strong partnerships that we know help our students to thrive. Then, our farewell events, as mentioned earlier, were held on either May 16th or May 22nd for all of the consolidated campuses. They were also highly attended by alumni, former parents, students, employees, former board members were there, and even the first principal of McCoy Elementary. He is also the father of our Director of Enterprise Systems, Mr. Daniel Herndon, and he's pictured there in the picture. They sent a text saying, "First principal and last principal." So I thought that was really a neat picture. They planned very thoughtful events that honored not only the history of the campuses, but also acknowledged the deep connections and the memories that they've really made within their school communities so special. The gatherings gave the campuses a chance to celebrate, recognize contributions, as well as look ahead with hope and unity. So I want to thank everyone for their collaborative efforts and all the campus teams for creating such thoughtful events. I know there was a lot of work put into those, but they were very special and very meaningful. So I will now pass us over to our Assistant Superintendent of Operations, Mr. Chris Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Holcomb. President Hatfield, friskies, Dr. Eldridge. I am going to give an update on operations with a, primarily with a focus on the facilities group that's headed up by Bobby Shaw because the men and women of facility services have done yeoman's work in a very short period of time. You can see there, the moving and supplies timeline, we're in the midst of June and July. That is the moving window. July 28th, we are still with that date as far as making the materials available in the new locations for our teachers as they are relocated to their new areas for them to move in and set up. The dispersment, we have dispersed more than 4,000 boxes, 250 rolls of tape, packing labels and instructions. You saw that in some of what Ms. Holcomb shared. The progress update, they have already cleared two campuses. Central and Ferno Buildings, they have been cleared. 90 classrooms, 111 teachers, they have had their materials moved. Those pictures there to the right, I'll share some more here in a couple of slides, but that is Central. You know, that's what was packed up at Central. And then there have been 40 classrooms that have been relocated for construction at Central as well because as, as we mentioned, Central was the, was target one, if you will, because the Turner transition of using that as a, as a site over the course of this next school year. So Central, Central has been cleared. The next phases, Long Middle School relocation's underway, very much what you see at Central. Moving the teaching materials and the curriculum materials, getting those to the new classrooms. The additional campus staff at Long as well, that will be completed by the end of the week at Long. It will be cleared. And then McCoy, once McCoy is cleared, same process as what you, you've seen at Central and at Long and Ferno to start moving, moving the, the teachers and their materials out. The reassignments bullet there, that's really for the classroom and the instruction moves. A lot of what Ms. Holcomb shared, they packed up the materials there. Pre-K, bilingual, everything that was, that was there at the campuses. And so, that reassignments piece, that will be moving those sections to their new locations due to the, to the consolidations and the rezonings. Some of the bigger moves to note, Blair Pre-K to Farmer's Branch, Blanton Bilingual to Carrollton, Good Pre-K to Country Place, the McCoy Leap Program, Elementary Leap Program that was at McCoy to Good, River Chase Pre-K to Lavalita, and Thompson Pre-K to Rainwater. And so, they're moving entire sections. It's not just relocating the teachers and the staff at the campuses. Facility Services is moving these entire sections, these entire curriculum sections on top of that. So that will be a chore for them to take on once the campuses are set. And then with the storage and the surplus pieces there, Long Middle School is going to use kind of a strategic stationing for larger surplus, larger materials, and for the curriculum department to review their supplies. the curriculum department to review their supplies. Technology is also there, fine arts curriculum, so Long's been used as a strategic storage stationing place. What you don't see up there, one piece, furniture and surplus. Anytime we are in the summer months for a school district, there's a lot of moves. Furniture surplus is, there, there's a lot of moves with regard to furniture. We've streamlined that immensely this year. This has given us an opportunity within facilities to take a look at how we move and what we move. It is all based on student needs solely. Pre-K, sped, CDA, classrooms for new locations at the beginning of the school year. So it's really given us the chance to streamline what we move in the summer and where we move it to. Our safety and security department is also already archived. They're three to four weeks ahead at the four consolidated campuses. They have archived Raptor, the Raptor pieces, so that's all taken care of at those campuses. And then we're readying some additional classrooms for art and, and curriculum moves. So I'd mentioned those pictures there, that's Central. And that, those are the folks that are, that are doing the work. Huge shout out again to Facility Services, to our warehouse group, our distribution, technology. You can see there, that is, that is the work that was done at Central. They really, they, they just, they got after it. And so they packed it all up and they were done in Central in a week and they've got all of those things redistributed. So that is the before shot of Central and this is the after shot of Ferno. So that is, that is a picture of Ferno as of this week. And so they are moving, they are hustling and they are bustling to, to get the things done. So that's an overview of what Bobby and his group's been doing in facilities. So I'll turn this back over to, to Mr. Mersch.
As we close the presentation, I want to leave you with the simple message. We are not ready, just logistically, but in spirit, commitment and care. Every student has been placed, every staff member has been placed and supported. Every classroom is on track to be ready for day one. We didn't just consolidate schools, we united the majority, not all, but the majority of the people, protected quality, and proved what's possible when we lead with heart. On behalf of every department represented here tonight, thank you for your trust and continued partnership. We appreciate our students, parents and staff for their support during this transition. Last but not least, we thank you, our Board of Trustees, for your commitment to making difficult decisions that are in the best interest of our students. The major takeaway that we hope that everyone will leave with tonight is that we are unified, prepared, and student-centered. UPS.
Thank you, Mr. Mersch and team, and all of the people behind the scenes that are shown in these pictures, not shown in these pictures and have worked so hard, because it's not just about the closure, it's about all the work that goes into being ready for day one. I think the only thing we might have forgot is the number of rolls of shrink wrap. So if you could get that report to me, no, I'm just kidding. I think, I saw a lot of shrink wrap in there. Board members, do you have any comments or questions? Ms. Benavides?
I was thinking about the memory pages and the carryforward for the people that the likes or the friends, is that, did that carryforward, or does everybody have to start over all of the memory pages?
So the memory pages are, they're still up. You can still like them, but we're the ones who have access to that, so we'll continue to post on there when, if we, when we have any new materials. There's talk about writing some legacy stories, and so you can still like them. They're active pages, they're just now memory pages.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Garza Rojas?
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Mersch. Ms. Rodriguez, I have a quick question for you. You mentioned, can I just get clarification on something you said? You said something about principal communication and Teams, it was a little, it's complex, but can I get a, like a bigger understanding on what that, that, that means? What does that mean for our kids and?
So every principal or every campus has the ability to communicate with their families through Parent Square. And so Parent Square is fed information from Teams, which is our, our system where we have all of our student information. So currently, the principals would not be able to see their receiving students, so either students who are going to be rezoned to them or who are coming from a consolidated campus, they won't see them until that, there's a turnover, and I know technology's here, so I don't know when that, when that happens, but there's almost like the tide turns and then they get their new kids. It happens over the summer. So right now, because they don't have access to those students, Harry Bailey has been creating groups for them where they're able to communicate with those students who are either rezoned or who will be coming from a consolidated campus. So they're able to send direct messaging just to that small group.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Additional comments?
BJ Welsh just gave us some information. The rollover that you're referencing will be the last week of July.
Additional comments or questions? All right, well, again, thank you all for your hard work. Sorry, Ms. Benavides, thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to talk about the percentage of transfers that are still open. Are there any, or does that include it in 100% of the children that you spoke of?
Our last report is that all consolidated sta, I mean, students and staff have been placed.
Okay, thank you.
So again, just thank you to each of your teams, those of you that are here that work with those people. Please send our thanks and appreciation. And I'm so thankful for Facilities for doing this early in the summer before it gets too hot. I think that was a really great move to protect our staff in this summer heat, so thank you all very much. At this time, board, we can choose to take recess. Does anybody need a recess or we want to keep going?
Power through.
Power through, all right, we're going to power through, that means y'all get to power through. And our next agenda item is item number five, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a mechanism that we use to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes a list of all consent agenda items, and the board was provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action being taken on the consent agenda, the board members will request withdrawal of individual items for clarification and/or discussion. Board members, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda at this time? Yes, sir. Mr. Gilmore?
President Hatfield, I'd like to remove items AS, AT, AU, and AV from the consent agenda to be considered separately.
Thank you. I have a request to remove AS, AT, AU, and AV. I will, Ms. Benavides?
I too wanted to remove the AV.
Okay, AV. And then I personally will also remove AN. So just to make sure we have it, we have a removal of AN, AS, AT, AU, and AV. Are there any other items to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay, so hearing none, or I do hear some. If there are no other items to be removed, do I have a motion regarding the consent agenda as amended? Ms. Brady?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of AN, AS, AT, AU, and AV.
All right, I have a motion for Ms. Brady. Do I have a second? I have a second from Ms. Barnes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? By a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. The next agenda item is item six, items for discussion and our action. Our first one is items removed from consent. We have multiple items removed from consent, so I'll start with AN. That was the one that I removed, which is the renewal and purchase of I Station for the 25, 26 school year. I don't have any comments, I'm just not going to vote on that item. Do we have a motion regarding this agenda item? Ms. Brady?
I make the motion. I make the motion to approve item AN as presented in the consent agenda.
All right, I have a motion for Ms. Brady. Do I have a second? I have a second from Ms. Garza Rojas. Is there any discussion? All of those in favor, raise your hand. Oops, sorry. All those opposed? By a vote of six in favor, zero opposed, the motion carries. The next one, AS, AT, AU, and AV. I believe we might be able to consider these all together with the exception of AU. Was that right? Was it AU, AV? Okay, so AS, AT, and AU. Mr. Gilmore, do you have any comments?
Other than I wasn't there, that's why.
No problem. Okay, so with that, do I have a motion regarding AS, AT, and AU? Ms. Brady?
I make a motion to approve items AS, AT, and AU from the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? Ms. Garza Rojas has a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of AS, AT, and AU, please raise your hand. By a vote of six in favor, zero opposed, the motion carries. And the next one we have is AV, and we have Mr. Gilmore and Ms. Benavides, I believe for the same reason. All right, so with that, do I have a motion? Ms. Brady?
I make a motion to approve the items AV from the consent agenda.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second from Ms. Garza Rojas. Is there any discussion? Great, all of those in favor? By a vote of four in favor. Any opposed? All right, by a vote of four in favor and none opposed, the motion carries. I think that was everything on the consent agenda. We will move forward to item 6B, which is to consider and approve a resolution regarding hazardous traffic conditions. Mr. Moore, with your shrink wrap, you're back.
All right. Thank you, President Hatfield, trustees, Dr. Eldridge. Here we go, open this up, 6B. And Ctrl-L because it is a PDF. Now I'm talking to myself, I will stop. So, so Texas Administration Code, which is, of course, as you all know, it's basically a compilation of all the state laws, the state, the, the agency rules, and it's managed to the Secretary of State. That allows districts to declare hazardous traffic areas. And those are areas that meet a variety of, of criteria. And much of, much of that you see there in the qualifications. And in meeting those qualifications, these hazardous traffic conditions, they are, they're eligible for, for consideration as a hazardous traffic condition. Ultimately, all of these routes, these conditions, they fall within two miles of a student's home campus. And the bulk of hours here in CFB, they're either related to traffic or railroad crossings. And this process in and of itself, the adoption of this, it's nothing new. It's a, it's an annual adoption, whether we as a district add hazardous conditions or not. It does require board adoption each year per TEA. This year, we are proposing five new hazardous routes for the 25, 26 school year. All proposals are a result of consolidation and all are traffic-related. All are also within the two-mile walk zone of the campus. You can see the five, the five that are listed there. And then I believe in the board information packet, there was a map that kind of outlined these visually. But for Blanton, that new proposal is for students who formerly attended McCoy Elementary. And essentially, that is most of the area that is from Trinity Mills South to Jackson, Tierra Colley, to be specific, and then Old Denton West to Josie. And this will aid in, in, for students not having to cross Josie as they get to Blanton. The second is Carrollton Elementary. That's for students who formerly attended Central Elementary. And that's a rectangle that's, it's a, it's a far-stretching rectangle, basically spans Josie East to 35 and Beltline South to Crosby. And that is to keep students from crossing Beltline with their, with a, with a bus route. Davidson Elementary, that's for students who formerly attended Ferno. And that's most of the area that is from the northernmost CFB boundary, South to Frankfurt, and then the railroad tracks that run parallel north and south, and that's over west to, to Josie. And again, that's to assist for students who will not have to cross Josie going to Davis. The fourth is McLaughlin-Strickland, and that is another, there were two that we created for the former Central students. That, that second recommendation for the McLaughlin-Strickland, that is Crosby South to Valwood, and then it is 35 East to Josie. And again, that's a route to keep students from having to cross Josie. And then the final of the five recommendations this year, it is for Thompson Elementary, and that is the second for Ferno. It is a very small sliver in area. It's one neighborhood, two to three streets, north to south, and it runs Ferno East to those railroad tracks that made the former Ferno boundary, and then Frankfurt North, just two to three blocks from Frankfurt, just two to three blocks north. And those are the proposed route recommendations for the traffic conditions for this upcoming 25, 26 school year. That, that gives us the, in total, 13 campuses, 17 routes in total, adding these five in here. And so with that, I will answer any questions you may have.
Board members, any questions? Mr. Shackman?
Mr. Moore, thank you for the presentation. That actually provides, using this designation, some additional funding to the district for transportation purposes.
Yes, sir. It's a dollar per mile, as long as our total hazardous route mileage does not exceed more than 10% of our annual mileage for our regular ed gen ed routes. We ran roughly 565,000 miles last year, so the 10%, we won't exceed. There won't be 56,000, we'll be within that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Additional questions? All right. Thank you, sir, for your presentation. With no additional questions, board members, this item is marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take action? Ms. Brady?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6B, the resolution regarding hazardous traffic conditions.
I have a motion for Ms. Brady. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Ms. Barnes? So with that, is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? By a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed, the motion carries. All right, our next agenda item is item 6C, which will take me a minute to read. So this is consideration and approval of an order authorizing the issuance by the Carrollton Farmer's Branch Independent School District if its unlimited tax school building and/or refunding bonds in one or more series as designated by purpose and series, levying a condition, continuing direct annual ad valorem tax for the payment of one or more series of bonds, prescribing the form, terms, conditions, and resolving other matters, incident and related to the issuance, sale and delivery, did I get that? Yeah, delivery of one or more bonds, series of bonds, including the approval and distribution of one or more official statements pertaining to their, thereto, authorizing the execution of one or more paying agents, registrar agreements, and purchase contracts each pertaining to a series of bonds, complying with the letter representations on file, with the depository trust company, delegating the authority of certain members of the Board of Trustees and the district staff to approve and execute certain documents related to the sale of each bond series, and providing an effective date. Ms. Settle?
All right. Well, good evening again, all. I hope you didn't miss me too much. Apparently, it's my turn, this meeting. So I have a little bit of an introduction before, to this agenda item, before we, we dive into the nuts and bolts of the market data with our financial advisor. I just wanted to remind the board and, and the community of the timeline of a bond. So in 2023, we, we so generously heard from the voters that they would like investment in school buildings in the district, and so the $716 million bond election was authorized. And we right away went in, in July, and issued that debt, the first tranche of that, for $400 million. And we have been diligently planning and spending that money according to the timeline set forth for the entire $716 million election. But now we come to the time that was set forth back in 2023 to consider the bond issuance for the final tranche, the, the 316 remaining authorized, authorization of the bond. And so we're running up against our, our calendar for the year for an early July potential bond sale. It is a very active bond market this year. If you heard anything about how many districts pass their bond elections this May. And, you know, we also interact with the Bond Oversight Committee, who monitors the bond projects and, and keeps us honest, right? That we stay on, on the type of projects that we're committed to in the, in the bond election campaign and appropriately spending that money on time. Looking forward ahead, we will adopt the tax rate that will continue to support to pay this Looking forward ahead, we will adopt the tax rate that will continue to support to pay this debt on August 21st of this year, of which we would like to continue keeping it at the steady 20 cents of I N S tax rate that we have communicated previously. And then finally, in September, a very comprehensive annual report from the Bond Oversight Committee is coming your way. With that, the giant question on the table is, we consolidated some schools, and there was some dollars attached to those schools. And I asked our executive construction officer, Corey Blackburn, to review the process with that.
Thank you. Just as, just to lay out a few things about the consolidation impact, it's an overall value of about 131.51 total budget dollars. Our priorities are, as we've shared with the Bond Oversight Committee, for elementary money to stay with elementary students, for middle school money to stay with middle school students, and to continue to honor the emphasis on addressing pre-K needs. At the July 22nd upcoming oversight meeting, we will have an architect presentation of options for the Bond Oversight Committee to consider. And at the August 21st board work study, we'll discuss the $316 million remaining authorization and issuance of the remaining tranche that Carla just mentioned. And then the September board meeting, as Carla also mentioned, we'll have the Oversight Committee report and possible action by the board. As we've shared with a few times with the board previously, we're considering the 2023 bond projects in three buckets. The first bucket was renovation work. We wanted to get the renovation work underway, we had a lot of campuses involved. I can tell you that just this summer, we're working on 17 different campuses with construction projects this summer. And we wanted to get that underway and in process before we began work on the replacement facilities, which is now also well into design. But using the replacement facilities as a carrot, after we go ahead and proceed with procurement for the renovation facilities, allowed us to get better coverage from the market in terms of builders interested in doing our work, which is critical, because as I've shared with the board previously, in the 2023 year, in the year 2023 bond cycle, over $17 billion worth of work was passed just in the North Texas area, just for public schools. So we really felt it was important to make our work as attractive as possible to the builders in the market. We feel like we had some good success with that. And then the third bucket is the safety and security work that we've made good progress with, but we're continuing to proceed with that. And the last thing I wanted to just share with the board as a reminder, we've also shared this with the Bond Oversight Committee in the past several meetings. As you can see, this is the cash flow projection for the entire $1716 million worth of bond projects. And we are still projecting, as we have, that we will finish all of the work by the end of the calendar 2028 year. So we're still on track to finish by the end of 2028.
And you saw ebbs and flows in that cash flow, and you'll have to be reminded that, you know, there's some things that we just didn't know in 2023, like who might be president in 2025, and the tariffs related that we see in the market today. So escalating building costs are a real concern as we work very closely together to make sure our bond project budgets come in reasonably as we planned for. Other things that are occurring right now that are a concern is, you know, what would a delay in this issuance of this tranche do to our project schedule? And again, I mentioned before, the competitive market in which our bond, our debt, that we're selling to investors, how will that be compared to other districts who are out in the market and getting the best interest rate on that? I think some of the advantages of issuance this summer is leveraging the state aid for the homestead exemption. Another thing we didn't know in 2023 is how many times the state would increase that homestead exemption. And now you'll see in November, the increase for frozen levy for homeowners over 65. That affects our ability to levy tax to support our debt payments. So, you know, getting that additional state aid is a real advantage here. But we do have to issue our debt before August and make that payment on August 15th with that related issued debt. I think the most thing, you know, if I was sitting as a taxpayer listening to this presentation, I would want to hear over and over and over that you're not raising my tax rate. And that's one thing this board can be very proud of, of doing major investment in a district without additional tax burden on your constituency. Again, kudos to Corey's team in keeping the spending on target so that we avoid any kind of penalties from not reading, reaching our three-year spending deadlines. And then, again, just keeping our community informed and staying transparent as we can. So with that, I would like to invite our financial advisor, Derek Honey, to talk through the nuts and bolts of what it is to issue this last bit of debt.
Well, good evening to everyone again, I'm Derek Honey with RBC Capital Markets and have Austin Spence with me as well. Ms. Settle did a great job introducing this, so I won't try to overlap at all, and I'll just hit the high notes here. Just kind of jumping into the market and where we are as we talk about the sale of remaining bond authorization. Interest rates have definitely come up in the last few years, as you've probably seen in your investment accounts, as well as your mortgages. But the market is still attractive. Bonds are getting sold every day, and we anticipate that would happen with this authorization as well. There is some volatility, which you've probably seen as well. It depends on every hour, what's coming out of the White House, what happens with markets, with tariffs, and just interest rate, what the Federal Reserve is doing. So we think we can mitigate that and handle that as we enter the market. I always like to show you this, this is a historical municipal bond interest rate index that goes back to 1961. And the yellow bar is where we are today at a 520. And, you know, over 60 years, basically, this says that about half the time, rates have been higher than they are today. So although rates have come up over the last few years, we're still at a relatively attractive position with interest rates. This is a summary of the district's outstanding debt. We've got, I think, about eight or nine series of bonds outstanding, with the most recent one being the Series 23 Bonds that were issued to produce 400 million in project proceeds. The two series of bonds on the top there highlighted, the Series 2015 and Series 2015A, were bonds that the board authorized us to refinance late last year. Unfortunately, the market didn't cooperate, we weren't able to do that yet. But you do have a provision in your order tonight that extends that provision for another year. If the market does cooperate and rates come down, we'll have the ability to still refinance those. If the board approves us moving forward with a bond sale tonight, the first thing we'll do tomorrow morning is reach out to the credit rating agencies. When the school district sells bonds, we need to get a credit rating, much like in your personal debt. You have a credit rating that shows investors how creditworthy you are. The district has that as well. We have two ratings from S and P Global Ratings and Moody's Investor Service at AA1 and AA+. If you look at the chart there on the bottom, that's the second highest rating available. So the district has very good credit, which lowers its borrowing costs. And then also, we're afforded what's called the state's permanent school fund guarantee, which allows us to enhance your debt with the state's credit rating of AAA, which is the highest rating available. We have already applied for that guarantee and received it in anticipation of a potential bond sale. There's, this page is pretty technical, but to Ms. Hatfield's comment earlier, this is related to the bond defeesance. So defeesance is our fancy word for basically paying down debt early. And what we have here assumed, and the board passed this earlier, or late last year when adopting the tax rate, is a defeesance of roughly 9.25 million, which would lower the district's interest payments by about $9.1 million. And it also opens up a little bit of capacity for a future bond election as we paid debt off early. This is something we, if the board moves forward with the bond sale, we'd kind of like to do those in tandem. It's a little more efficient to do that together and structure the debt that way. This is a little more color and detail on the potential refunding or refinancing that we were looking at. If you look kind of the bottom left of the page, this is an interest rate chart of where the board approved us looking at doing that refinancing. And you can see from there, rates basically went straight up, and we were never able to get back to the savings level. So our hope is that that would decline at some point, and we would get back to a reasonable savings level. But what that looks like on a numerical basis, this is, there are a lot of numbers on this page. But if you look at the very middle, the bright blue bars, net present value of debt service savings on the left, we thought we were going to produce about $400,000 in debt service savings at the time. And if you work right, you can see as interest rates went up, that number went down. And today's market, we're not producing any savings. But again, we'll continue to watch this, and if the market cooperates, we'll include that as well. Okay, so this is kind of jumping into the analysis of what does it look like to sell the district's remaining bond authorization. And as Ms. Settle said, in 2023, we had this timeline planned out of, we would sell the second tranche in the summer of 2025, not only to meet your projects, but that's how we have it structured in the debt payments. But more importantly, we've had this legislative change where the homestead exemption was increased, and there's some pretty significant hold harmless money that's in play for the district if we get the debt issued by August. That's the kind of the qualifying point to get the additional state funding. And we're going to see a lot of districts, pretty much every district in Texas that has authorization is going to be rushing to market to sell basically as much as they can of their debt within their tax rate constraints to be able to get that funding. So that kind of became paramount of getting this timeline achieved. So that's a really important factor for us right now. I won't go through all these assumptions, we do have a little cushion in the interest rate here, so we hope we can come in a little bit better than this, what I'm showing you here. But again, this is our tax rate model, and again, there's a lot of numbers on this page, and you may not be able to read them all. But if you direct your eye all the way over to the right, the second column from the right in the gray, that's our projected I N S tax rate, effectoring in your current payments, the potential new bond sale, backing out any state funding, and conservative taxable assessed value growth. We project that you would be able to maintain a 20 cent I N S tax rate for three years. And then the tax rate would drop pretty significantly, probably over four pennies, which gives us capacity for a future bond election if the board decided to pursue that somewhere down the line. So the plan has worked out really well, we're on plan and under budget. And if we can get this last piece sold, I think we'll be in really good shape going forward. Lastly here, I want to just show the timetable. If the board were to approve us moving forward tonight, we would start in earnest tomorrow, again, getting credit ratings in place, putting a financing team together in hopes that first or second week in July, we would be in a position to actually offer the bonds to investors, lock in all the terms, the interest rates. And then from there, it's usually three to four weeks to actually get the transaction closed, which is what would qualify us for that additional state funding. And then we would hope to make a bond debt service payment in August as well and get all that completed before you set your tax rate in late August. So I know I've said a lot, there's a lot of numbers in there, not to get too far into the weeds, but I'm happy to answer any questions around any of that.
Board members, questions and comments? Ms. Garza Rojas?
I think I just have one question. What happens if we push this out a month? 30 days, 60 days, our decision as a board? What would happen to all of this?
So based on the new legislation passed, that you wouldn't get the additional hold harmless funding related to the homestead exemption increase, and we've calculated it's about 23 million, would be the loss in state funding.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Additional comments? Ms. Barnes?
So back in 2023, when we sold the first part of these bonds, I know there is some, I went back and watched it, and I know there was some conversation about hold harmless money to offset. The number given at that time for hold harmless was hopefully $37 million from the state to offset the loss of revenue. Do we know what the outcome of that actually was? Was there any hold harmless money that we were able, you know, for the reasoning of taking advantage of it at that time? What was the outcome? Was there hold harmless money that was?
Yes, ma'am, it worked very similar. This legislation is a little bit different, the wording is a little bit different about what qualifies you. But we did receive the full hold harmless at that time, and it's over the life of the debt. So a 30-year period, we'll get all that hold harmless money.
Ms. Brady?
As I expressed to you earlier today, I think the issue right now, for some of our constituents, is the fact that we have, of the consolidated campuses, we have a piece of that, what is left of the bond, that has not been quote-unquote spoken for by the bond committee, by our bond attorney, et cetera. There's no plan. And so I think the, there's concern about releasing that money if maybe we don't need it. I know we're going to need it, I know we can spend it, I'm not worried about that. But there seems to be no plan at this time. I'm going to propose to the board that we give this a week and call a special meeting in a week. So that gives everybody time to do their own research, ask their own questions, call these gentlemen, there's another one in the audience, ask any questions we have, and give us all time to digest. That would also give the opportunity for the community to come forward with any of their concerns, or come speak at a special meeting. So I'm going to throw that out there, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I figure it would give all of us a chance to digest some of this information.
I think it's definitely something up for discussion. So at this time, we're going to keep talking about what we think might be necessary and consider what we want to do. Mr. Gilmore?
I understand the need in your timeline, but taxpayers want to know that everything's being done with a plan in place. And it feels kind of like we're between a rock and a hard place. We got to do this, or we lose the money, or it's going to cost more. I agree with Ms. Brady, we need to push this a little bit further down and do our due diligence.
Thank you. Additional comments? Ms. Barnes?
So another question I had was also looking back on some of the meetings where we talked about bonds, and specifically this 2023 bond, or 2023 meeting, sorry. One of the things the board at that time asked for was a plan, a plan of how that money was going to be spent. And because it's useful not only to us to will say, hey, this is what we're spending this part of the bond money on, but also so we can tell the community, like, so that the community understands, this is where that money's going. And as we're stepping into, then moving into this second phase, I think it would just be very helpful to be able to see not only where did that money go, but where this next part's going, and why is it? And kind of to piggyback off of some of Ms. Brady's comments and Mr. Gilmore's comments, because we know that there are reasons why we are using that extra money, that we know there's tariffs and all of that. But just to have an idea, and so that we're not, just so that everyone can see where we're at, where we've come from, and where we need to go to get all of these projects done.
Additional comments? Mr. Gilmore?
And from looking back on when the bond, the wording was kind of vague. The board has oversight to move money from here to there, as I understand it. But there were also specific projects named that that money's not going to be used for, correct? So as a taxpayer, I'm looking at it saying, that's a bait and switch. And so I need to have answers, and we need to have a clear unified voice and vision that says, this is what we're going to do. I know that Kim's committee's going to be meeting sometime soon, the bond committee, to go over that. That would be the start of that process, I think. But we need to just delay that a little bit on what Kim said.
So thank you for comments. I would like to go back to the presentation from administration for a moment, specifically looking specifically looking at the timeline for the 2023 bond. So the existing timeline in that presentation, I'm not sure what slide it's on. I understand that's the projects and kind of the runway for them. But is that the projects from the 400 that is in basically that graphic? It's all of them? Okay. All of them, with the exception of 131 million, that we don't, we need to figure out what's going to happen with that, correct?
Yes. But we're very hopeful that we'll still be pending the presentation to the bond oversight committee in July and their decisions, assuming they arrive at a decision at that meeting that they can recommend to the board. I believe the plan would be to present that to the board for action, as we had on a previous slide in the September board meeting. If we're able to do that, we do expect that we should be able to still complete the entire 716 million by the end of 2028.
Okay, so you're anticipating that with the bond oversight support, you can make plans and ensure that, because I think we should also go back to the role of the bond oversight committee. So their job is to ensure that projects funded by the bond sales are consistent with the priorities and the planning presented from the Citizens Bond Planning Committee. So they would be able to provide information to administration on if they feel like we would still be within the scope of what was there. But we are going to have to recognize and just call out the fact that we put on a website that we were going to do certain things, and that has now changed. And we don't, we don't have a choice. Like, that's the way things have changed with enrollment. Situations have changed, and we're going to have to make some adjustments. And I think it's really important that we just be transparent and lay that out there. So when I look at this slide, I see that right now, the cash flow, I'm wondering how much of our 400 million have we spent down? Where are we at in that process? And where do these two meet up? So are we looking, I understand the hold harmless money, because I see the market piece. The market tells us we need to go to sell, because we've got hold harmless money. How long can we wait on a project side before we sell and still be able to meet our end goal? And maybe that's not a question we can answer tonight.
The only thing I can comment is the draw schedule for our current authors, our current issuance. We'll expend all of our issuance by this time next year. So.
Okay, so.
Which is three years since its issuance.
Yes, thank you. Additional comments? Questions?
Yes, Ms. Garza Rojas?
And probably this is for you, Ms. Hatfield. If we wait a week and we call a special meeting the way Ms. Brady is suggesting, what does that mean for us financially?
I think we could still accomplish the bond sale. Again, there's a lot of deals coming to market, and we don't know all those and their timelines. So we get kind of a crunch with the credit rating agency of how fast can they get a rating, and can they meet our deadline? But I think a week, I think we talked about earlier, pushing it to a future like monthly meeting, and I don't think that's doable, but I think a week is doable.
Dr. Eldridge?
I think also for clarity for Corey and his team, what specifics do you want to see regarding projects? So we know that we're, if you go back to the slide, we're in design phase for our two elementary schools. So we know that's coming. Is that estimated budgets? So we have been following this process. We saw the designs for the new construction. We also have 17 campuses under renovation. So is it, you know, I think that for clarification for Corey and his team, what are the specifics that you want clarified as far as the plan that you want to see?
So, yes, Ms. Barnes?
I mean, I think that what we're looking for is basically, here's kind of how this first amount's been spent. Here's how we're spending it down, and here's what we still have left to do. And I understand this isn't a line thing where it's like, I know exactly how much this is going to cost, but just this basic, you know, here's how much we've spent down so far. Here's the projects we've accomplished. Here's where we're at now, and here's where we need to go. And I think for me, that's kind of what I was envisioning. I don't know for others.
Additional comments on, well, Ms. Benavides?
On that same line, simplify it for our community. Because right now, we have so much money out there, so many projects going on. And what are we doing with the money that was promised? And I know Brian shared earlier that elementary funds stay with elementary, et cetera, et cetera. But at the same time, there's really no detailed information about what has been done, like Ms. Barnes shared.
There is the information on the website under the 2023 bonds section that shows the components that are being put into place at each of the campuses. So you can go campus by campus, or you can go and look, and they give you work done in broad categories. So you can look at it both ways, and it's fairly specific on the website. And that's been there, as I understand it, since before the original vote for the bond.
And there's been no changes?
I think the only changes that have been made have been the updates to reflect the consolidation.
Well, I suggest you do some kind of social media engagement with our community, because they don't feel that it's clear enough.
Okay, so, board, the way I see it is kind of like Mr. Gilmore said, between a rock and a hard spot. We, as a board, have to make long-term financial decisions. And right now, the long-term financial decision that we have at play is that selling the remainder of this bond by next week, or issuing the authority to sell it by next week, will allow us to go through the process that's been outlined by September 1st, which affords us the hold harmless funds, which means that over the life of the sale, then our taxpayers could see that invested back in, because we would be saving that hold harmless funds. However, from what several of you have said, you may feel like you don't have enough information, and you need some additional information. By waiting a week, that is possible. But we also have to be able to say exactly what we need from administration, and we can't tell them that the day before the special meeting. And so I think there's some additional clarity that they would need to understand what our needs are, via that be two-on-one meetings, you know, two board members meeting with administration. But we have to give them guidance as to what we feel like is missing. Or they will come back in a week, and we'll be at the same spot. And then we are between two rocks in a hard place. So with that, we have some options. We can postpone this to a particular time point. We can make a motion and go ahead and vote on it. We could consider voting on a portion of it. I do have one question. If we were to vote to sell a portion of the 316 million, how would that impact the defecence? It would not. Okay. Ms. Brady?
My understanding is if we only sell part of this, and we leave the 131 to a later date, that the only issue would be, would be a higher, or less, smaller interest rate on that 131, and possibly a more difficult sale of that bond. Is that correct?
No, not necessarily, though. The impact would be less state funding. So if you sold half of that, then, you know, the state funding, you would only get half of that money. You'd leave the rest out there.
Got it. Okay, so the hold harmless money
Yes, ma'am.
would be held back from that. Okay. So if we wait a week and we call a special meeting in a week, we should be good to go for the hold harmless money, selling the bonds, getting all of it. All of it can still happen if we just wait one week.
I think so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Mr. Gilmore?
I agree that if we do wait a week, we need to have, give them clarity on what we need. Whether that's a day, several of us get together, have calls, special meeting, whatever, and figure that out so that by Monday, we can, I know that's a quick timeline, but.
So we, to be able to do that, we would have to do that individually or in small groups, because we cannot have a quorum, and we cannot have a walking quorum at all. And so I think there could potentially be a mechanism designed. We also have the subcommittee at our disposal. So we have the infrastructure subcommittee that could come together and work with administration on the needs of the board. But there are three members on that committee, and so there's a little bit of making sure that we stay true to the Open Meetings Act and are very cautious in that way.
Ms. Hatfield, I would also like to invite some members of the bond committee to attend those meetings, so that they have full understanding of what's happening.
I also wonder if we need to hear from the bond attorney on some of these impacts.
You have a representative here from your bond attorney? You have questions? Sorry, I should have introduced her.
Well, welcome. Hi.
Good evening, everyone. Melissa Liel, I'm here from Contu Harden Montoya.
Wonderful. I'm not sure I know what question I would have for a bond attorney, but other than you have more information about likely the impact of what the voters approved in comparison to the projects, and the fact that we did consolidate. And so we have this issuance that we're going to have to make some calls on, on what we can still hold true for voters, that we are abiding by what they voted for in recognition that some of the projects have not changed with that authority. Can you expand on that a little bit?
Well, I guess two things. One is certainly we're available to answer questions about how the props worked, how, where you are now, and what impact that would have. I don't have that information, and unfortunately, did not come exactly prepared for that kind of question. But certainly, if you're moving money around, there is, you know, some consideration for that. But generally speaking, if you're spending money on the projects that were for facilities and that sort of thing, you should, there shouldn't be issues. I mean, I think, as you have said, in some of the questions that have been raised, this is more about communicating what those differences are, and making sure you're being true to what you've publicly addressed with the community. But just, I would just offer that certainly we are available to answer questions from the bond review committee. We can be present if we need to be, either virtually or in person. We'll do whatever we can to address any questions.
The language gives them the latitude.
Yes, sorry.
The language does give the latitude in the original bond election and bond orders to move money between projects, because it was for school building.
We intentionally draft a lot of flexibility into the orders and what the school district is using. Certainly, and even the order tonight is a plan of finance order, which allows you some flexibility with new money and refunding as well. And I apologize if I didn't address that question completely. Thank you, Ms. Settle, for clarifying.
Okay, board. At this point, our options are to postpone, take or take specific action on this order. And so with that, I will entertain a motion, or we, or no motion. Okay, so, yes, Ms. Barnes?
I would like to make a motion to postpone for a week, I guess is what Brady said, for a week, and hold a special meeting during that time in which we will hopefully get more questions answered, get more clarity on different things. And then hold, if we have questions specifically, and then hold a special meeting to decide.
Okay, so I have a motion to postpone item 6C for one week and call a special session to reconsider. Do I have a second? I have a second from Ms. Garza Rojas. All those in favor?
Any discussion?
Oh, sorry. Any discussion? Thank you. Appreciate it. Any discussion? Mr. Gilmore?
I like the motion, but are we going to have somebody to give them some direction?
Yes, sir. So.
I think we need in the motion, a timeline on that, and what's expected of whoever's going to do that.
So with that, sir, you would have to make an amendment to the motion. I can also tell you, as board president, I will, I can make arrangements with administration. So I have the authority with support of the board to be able to talk to Dr. Eldridge, and we will make a strategy for that. That could be a Google form where you submit your questions. It could be calling short meetings. I think that I can make that happen and ensure that everybody has an opportunity to get their questions answered. Yes. Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, so we have a motion on the floor to postpone item 6C for one week and come back for a special called meeting to reconsider. All those in favor? All those opposed? By a vote of six in favor and one opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Our next agenda item is item 6D. Consider and approve the demolition of buildings located at 2115 East Frankford Road in Carrollton, Texas 75007, and 18111 Kelly Boulevard, Dallas, Texas 75287. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, President Hatfield, trustees, Dr. Eldridge. Tonight, I have to share with you the proposed demolition of two facilities. Both have been vacant for some time, approaching 11 years combined between the two of them. As you can see there, the former Marie Huey Building is at 2115 Frankford. It's in Carrollton. It's been vacant since the summer of 2017. And then the former Sheffield Primary Building, that is located on Kelly Boulevard, just south of the current Sheffield Elementary, and that has been vacant since 2022. Front shots of both of the buildings there in the bottom of the picture. Throughout the, we have attempted as a district to sell or donate 2115 Frankford in the past. In 2020 and 2021, there were five offers that were received from investors and church groups. Each surpassed more than $2 million. And the initial offer, however, was withdrawn, and none of the secondary offers were pursued by investors, due in large part to the building's condition after the initial inspections came through. And then throughout 2024, our district negotiated with a local foundation in an attempt to donate the facility for a community outreach, community engagement center. And investors ultimately left that conversation, again, with one of the largest factors being the building's condition. There have not been any attempts to sell the Kelly Boulevard Sheffield Primary. But appraisals that we received from Valbridge Property, they indicate that both sites have higher values as vacant. And so you can see there that Old Sheffield, as is, with the building on site, it is valued at $4.1 million. With the building gone, it is valued at $5.595 million, which is a difference, if you will, of $1.46 million if the building was demolished, potentially through the land value. Old Huey, you can see that there, as is, with the building on site, it's $2.2 million, a little over. With the building gone, vacant, it's $3.5. Again, demolishing could potentially net an additional $1.25 million with that structure gone. So according to the appraisal, selling both of those properties vacant with no building on site, it could generate upwards of $2.75 million additional dollars. And so with that proposed demolition cost, plus the 20% contingency, that's a $1.165 million estimation. And with the potential proceeds, it could still result in a net profit of $1.165 million. with the potential proceeds, it could still result in a net profit of $1.5 million if the buildings were sold, or if the properties were sold with no buildings. And I will get to that property comment here in just a couple of slides. The timeline, if we were to move forward with this, you see there that August 1st, the build, it took 30 days for the approval of the contracts, 10 days for the site fencing, demolition could begin as soon as August 1st. The onsite demolition activities, they could extend upwards of 90 days. And so if we were to begin by August 1st, the buildings could be down by the first part of November. Site restoration would last through winter break to where they would, those final 60 days, that would last through winter break, and the site could be restored as is when we, shortly after we returned from winter break. What I said I would get back to in just a second. So I want to, these last two slides, they have nothing to do with tonight's presentation, but they have everything to do with tonight's presentation. And you can see there that I'd mentioned land sale. And, you know, the appraisals show what the land would be valued at with the property, the building there on the property and the building gone. Land sale process is an entirely different step from building demolition. We're not talking about land sale tonight. We're simply talking about the demolition. It's kind of like, Ms. Hatfield, when you said your daughter commented, are you calling them? When the legislature came through and you're like, yeah, there's 30 different steps. I got to check in on it. Well, there's six right there, and within each six, because we are a governmental entity, there are multiple steps within the six. And so in order to sell land, we have to maintain those six steps, and then we are bound to other pieces within that as well. So it is a multifaceted process, 30, 60, 90 days. But those six steps are minimum. And then, you know, we're talking the planning with regard to bonds and whatnot. As a district, we would need to talk through planning with regard to land sale processes as well before we were to bring you the proposal to sell any of the land. And so to be clear as well, the only group that is able to offer up land sales is the board. And so there's lots of steps and lots of processes that go into the land sale process. And because that transitions nicely to the next slide, because we're not talking about selling the land, there's no requirement for a surplus designation. The education code, you can see there, that affords the board the authority to dispose of property that's no longer needed for district operations. And the term dispose is what is key within here. As you can see in that second bullet, disposal is linked to surplus and demolition is not linked to surplus. And so surplus is required if we are disposing of property, transferring, selling, leasing, buildings, cars, buses, curriculum materials. It's not required if we're demolishing a structure and then retaining the land. And so that again is what this agenda item is about. But even though surplus is not a designation that's required, formal approval, which is what we're bringing to you tonight, is highly advised so we can be transparent and so the public is aware. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Board members, questions, comments? Ms. Benavides?
Using fund balance funds for this demo, what other items can we use that pertain to children? Fund balance.
Oh, fun, yes. Talking with Ms. Settle this week, what was in the proposal did have fund balance as a reference, but the current year budget is what. After talking with her this week, not going to use fund balance, going to use the current year budget funding.
So the $19 million deficit already includes the demolition of 1.165?
No, ma'am. We're using current year budget funding from the facilities budget.
So you still have an open balance available to spend?
The demolition of the building would not be completed until after the end of this fiscal year. So then it would be paid for, and that whole project would be completed in the next fiscal year. Then the proceeds of the sale would offset that budget hold, if that makes sense.
If indeed we're able to sell it.
If we're indeed able to sell it, correct.
But up to now, the only offers were old. Is that correct? What you shared earlier, the churches, what have you?
Yes, ma'am. 2020, that was the last time that we put it on the market and sold, 2020, 2021. And the reasoning behind the offers, and there were five or six secondary offers, they all came back. It was the building's condition.
So there is a board, what was the, the, a board, excuse me, I want to go there, a resolution on file for these properties?
For the Frankfurt property, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That was to sell the land. That was designated to sell the land, sell the property, sell all of it. That's what the board resolution was for with that. It was declared surplus.
Additional questions? Mr. Moore, Mr. Shackman?
So my understanding is you believe it is advantageous for us to both declare the property surplus, both locations, and then include in that resolution authorization to demolish?
With a land sale, yes, sir. But what, this proposal tonight is just to, there's not a legal requirement to declare it surplus if we're going to demolish the building and retain the land itself.
I understand that, but I thought you said it would be advantageous to declare it surplus in addition.
And in selling the, in the land sale, yes, sir. Well, I'm sorry. It's not required to declare surplus, but the public vote, to vote to demolish the buildings is advantageous with regard to the transparency of the measures of keeping the public informed.
So it would be effective to just go ahead and make a motion to demolish the buildings?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's no legal requirement to declare the building surplus prior to the demolition because we're going to retain the land.
Mr. Gilmore, did you have a question?
I assume that we have multiple quotes and estimates for the demolition?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So those are out there. I can see those. And why are they saying, I think I heard you say it's because of the condition of the buildings, that it's more valuable as raw land than as a building? And I guess I don't know, Perry is a pretty old building, and they've done amazing things with that. So we could do, is it not cost effective to do that? That's one of my questions.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's redevelopment potential, the structural issues, or some of the things that they cited. Huey has been vacant for seven or eight years. And the, that building has suffered significant vandalism, significant theft. It has been, the electric, there's no electric running to it. The, there's no electric running from the transformer to the building. There's no secondary copper running from that into the building either. There's significant structural issues with Huey. Sheffield, with regard to the, just the redevelopment potential, Sheffield is not something that is in the shape that, it has suffered vandalism. It's not as, in as bad of shape as Huey. However, the appraisal indicated that that land would be worth more with that specific building gone.
Mr. Gilmore, to add to your question, we had a group interested in the Huey Building, and it was going to cost between 12 to 17 million for them to get it up to use for a community center. And then it got vandalized. There's no copper, all the AC units. And so in order to upgrade it, they didn't think with the location that the cost would be effective. And so they, I worked on it for a year and a half, and then they just ended up saying it would be best if it was demoed, so we could actually buy it to build the structure. But we did not get to that point. So I don't want that on record, that I've talked about selling a building or any of that. It was just simply looking at it as a community center that somebody wanted to upgrade it to use for our students in our district. And the cost to renovate that building was more than they could see as a value.
And then my final question. On Kelly, we haven't tried to sell it.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Is there a reason why we just want to go tear it down? Is it still the building?
With regard to, well, the cost of maintaining these facilities, you know, with the dwindling enrollment, the declining enrollment, and then there are parameters with regard to, there's a lot of strict parameters in how we sell, what we sell, who we sell to, how we market it with regard to the actual sell process.
I promised my last one.
Oh, you're fine. Yes, sir.
Have they given you projections? I always do market analysis of, once it's demoed, you said by November, I think you said, it could be demoed, and we go to sell. What is the, is it a 90-day market? Is it a year market? What is it? How long is it going, how long do we expect that to take to recapture that money?
The comps that we pulled had a, or the appraisal that we received, there were five to six comparable comparison pieces of land throughout the metroplex. I think all of those sold within two to three months for that comparison.
Ms. Barnes?
Hi. I just have a couple of questions. The first one, I've driven by both of these buildings recently. And one thing that's kind of, that kind of stood out to me as I was driving by the Sheffield Building to get into the residential area afterwards is just, it's basically landlocked by residential neighborhoods, an elementary school, apartment complexes. What is the zoning like for that property? Is there, are there, I would imagine there's some pretty big constraints in terms of who can go in there and do anything with that property?
It's currently zoned for residential.
Okay. All right. And then my second question is, you know, does the district have kind of a long-range plan of, you know, what if we need some of this later? Like, what if, you know, making sure that we're not selling something that maybe in 10, 15, 20 years, we need and it's a lot more expensive?
Yes, ma'am. And that's why we're not proposing any type of a land sale. But that's a very good question. They, because the comps on the acreage and the desired acreage of elementaries, middle, high schools, where does this fit within that to hang on to the land? But with regard to the buildings themselves, there's costs associated with maintaining them. And so with the declining growth and the fact that Sheffield, Sheffield Elementary was constructed to move the students out of the existing facility, there's no, there's no plan to use the former facility. That's sat there for three years now. But no, to your point, that land sale discussion is something that talked through and discussed.
I completely understand. I was just curious.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Brady?
I think just it's really clear that even if for some magical thing were to happen tomorrow, and we needed those properties and/or more buildings, we weren't going to, it's unlikely that we'd be using those buildings without some severe renovation and/or rebuild. They're not very inhabitable as they are now, correct?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
So either way, whether we keep it and build something on it, or we demolish and keep the land and/or sell the land, we don't need those buildings anymore.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That's what I was trying to get to.
Okay. So with that, I think that, Ms. Benavides, and we probably need to call it, or we're going to be here all night.
Okay. So with that said, if we decide to demo and then keep them, we have a projected deficit budget next year, and that would just increase that. Is that correct? Because we have no way of recovering those expenses. Thank you.
So I think from my perspective, one thing to consider here is because the land sale is separate, these are not the only properties that we own. And so therefore, because the board does have to declare surplus property, I would request, especially considering that we have a new board member, that before there is any request for the board to declare anything surplus, that we are able to, as a group, review all of the vacant properties and understand. I know that in the board memo recently, you guys shared the number of acres for an elementary, a middle, and a high school. And we have properties that are in those ranges. We have properties that are well under those ranges. So be it, if we were to decide as a board to declare surplus property, I don't think it's necessarily like these that would be the only thing for consideration. So I would just ask that administration prepare a work-study topic of potential, all of the property that we own that is potential surplus. And in addition to that, we need a long-range plan. So there have been ongoing discussions from community members and various people about what we could do with different properties. And while we can't predict the future, and we cannot determine what we will use something for in 20 years, what we do know is that in this community, we're not going to get land back. So if we sell it, we're not getting it back. And so we need to be, I think we need to be cautious personally, because the land is an asset, and it's still in the books as an asset. And so just being really cognizant that we cannot predict 20 years out, but we can predict that we won't get land back. So I would just request that. And with that, this item is marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take action? Ms. Brady?
I make the motion that we approve items D to consider and approve the demolition of buildings located at Frankford Road and Kelly Boulevard.
I have a motion for Ms. Brady. Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. Gilmore. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? By a vote of six in favor and one opposed, the motion carries. Next, we have item E, consider submission of an endorsement for the representative to Region 10, Position A and Position B on the Board of Directors for the Texas Association of School Boards. Just for members to know, TASB is a member led by six officers, and the Board of Directors make up school board trustees from districts in every educational service center, regions across the state, plus one representative for ESC boards. Elected at the Annual Delegate Assembly, the Board convenes at least four times a year to provide accountability, accessibility, and responsive decision-making and financial oversight to assure the alignment with member needs and priorities. As a board, we have an option to nominate someone to be considered for Region 10, Position A and Position B. The candidates are in your board book, along with information about each candidate is available to you. And so there are four considerations for Position A. Is there any one that has, would like to, Ms. Brady?
I would like to nominate Robert Selders for Position A at Region, excuse me, for TASB, and the, for Position B, Regina Harris.
Okay. I have a nomination for Robert Selders for Position A and Regina Harris for Position B. Board members, are there any other discussions or considerations around this?
I would just add that Robert Selders serves on the North Texas Area Association of School Boards with me as the treasurer, and I've seen his leadership at work, and so have actively engaged with him. And I do think that he would be a great representative. So with that nomination, I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Brady?
I'm sorry, I'm Aquilin. I'd like to make the motion. Okay. Now I'd like to make the motion that we nominate Robert Selders for Position A and Regina Harris for Position B.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Barnes is our second. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? By a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. Seven, right? All right. At this time, we will move to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is closed meeting as authorized by the Texas Government Code, including but not limited to Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, 551.072, real property, 551.074, personnel matter, 551.076, security devices, 551.082, schoolchildren, district employees, disciplinary matter or complaint, 551.0821, personally identifiable student information, 551.084, investigation. Item 7A is... Item 7A is to discuss intruder detection audit findings report and a cybersecurity update. That's Item 7A and Cybem B. At this time, the board will move to closed session, and the time is now 9:50.
We are back in open session and the time is now 10:24 PM. Our next agenda item is comments from board members regarding posted agenda items. Board members, do you have any comments you wish to make at this time about the posted agenda? All right, with that, welcome to summer and the summer schedule for our administration. We have reached the end of our agenda and we are adjourned at 10:25 PM.